Good evening, everybody. This is the meeting of the Carlisle Select Board.
Somebody's got their...
No, I don't think it's...
Is it me?
Yeah.
Okay. Williams in the family.
Drew, can you hear anything?
I hear you now, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good. And we are going to go into executive session and have a motion, please.
I move that the board enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Subsection 21A, Paragraph 5, to investigate charges of criminal misconduct or to consider filing of criminal complaints.
And I'd like a roll call vote, please.
Brown, aye.
I guess we're starting at that end of the table.
Reed, aye.
Arnold, aye.
Ascoli, aye.
And Brown is absent at the moment. I mean, Modell is absent at the moment, sorry. Okay, and then a second motion, please.
I move that the board enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Subsection 21A, Paragraph 6, to consider the value of real property located at 238 Bedford Road in connection with a gift of an indoor/outdoor pickleball complex, as the chair has declared that an open meeting may be detrimental effect on the town's negotiating position and that afterwards, the board will return to open session.
Another second.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Brown, aye.
Reed, aye.
Arnold, aye.
Ascoli, aye.
Thank you. So we are now in executive session. All right, good evening, everyone. We are opening the Carlisle Select Board meeting. And I'm going to do a quick review of the agenda. We'll have community input. And then Chief Fisher is going to give us the LEPC update, which is going to include a little bit longer time than what's shown on the agenda here so that we can discuss the mask mandate that the Board of Health passed last week. Then we will have a discussion about combining the Veterans and Celebrations Committees, a personnel request from the Council on Aging, the request from the Finance Director. We are going to wait and postpone that for the September 14th meeting. Then appointments and liaisons, continued consideration, discussion of our personnel policies. Then a finalization of our, hopefully, more progress on our Select Board goals. And then the Town Administrator's Report, which has a number of different items. If we have time, we'll do liaison reports and then approval of the minutes and adjournment. Our goal is to adjourn at 10 minutes of 10, which I would feel very proud of if we managed to do that tonight. Okay. So let us begin, and let me ask first if there is anyone here who would like to make a comment, provide community input, either someone physically here or someone that is coming in via Zoom. See anybody on the... No. Let's see, who can tell if somebody wants to speak up? They can put their hands...
I don't see anyone's hand up.
There's two people on, huh? Is that right?
No, there's more than that. That's all that will fit.
Oh, okay. All right.
Chris Eisenbees from the Veterans Committee.
Okay, that's for later then. Okay, well, it's not... Looks like we don't have anyone for community input. So, welcome, Chief Fisher. Thank you for being here tonight. I'm going to turn it over to you.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. I'd like to do the LEPC report from yesterday. So the LEPC met, and as usual, we led off with Linda Fantasia's report. There've been seven new COVID cases in Carlisle in August. She had some other comments about the demographics. And importantly, Linda presented the Board of Health's mask mandate in brief, acting under their authority, Mass General Laws. And as a result of the recent uptick in COVID cases in Carlisle and throughout our area, they've opted to go with a mask mandate for indoor spaces or private spaces that are open to the public within the town of Carlisle. And that, of course, they're the normal exceptions. We spent, of course, a good deal of time at the meeting talking about this and other mandate language imposed by other towns. And 100% of the LEPC endorsed our Board of Health's proposal. And we spent probably the rest of our time kind of working on the logistics about how that's going to play out, including making protective gear and cleaning gear available for those coming to Town Hall. We went short of having a gatekeeper back at Town Hall, so there's not going to be a gatekeeper there. We're just going to rely on Carlisle residents to wear their masks when they come into Town Hall to do business and to adhere to social distancing that we've all become familiar with during these times. And I think that... I think we have a good plan for that. But importantly, we took the, I don't know if it's a posture that we're not going to spend an order of time working about how this is enforced or penalties that, I mean, folks have just gotten used to this. And Carlisle's done an extraordinary job of keeping themselves safe, keeping our residents safe. So we really didn't feel any need to go further into that, if that makes sense. Fire Department had a report, of course. They've continued to do testing. Their testing has increased, the frequency of their testing. They've done some, are planning to do some sports team testing and others that go, this is just an incredible thing that our fire department's doing for our residents. And so the LEPC, you know, thanked them for their continued efforts through Chief Soros. Our Council on Aging had a great report. They've done tremendous amount of work with our residents. They're doing things like still giving people rides, still doing events. They have lots of sign-ups for their October 1 flu clinic. And we appreciate all they do for our residents. My car now, the Carlisle Neighbor Response Team has continued to do grocery shopping and run errands for those that need it. Reports from the schools, of course. Schools open on Wednesday, and there's obviously a safety plan and a mask mandate for the schools as well. And we talked a little bit about the emergency drill schedule for the schools. The library, they're fully staffed, continue to do their outdoor events. They did hold off on one event. They're going to hold off on the art reception on October 1st. And the rest of us mostly had just minor things to report. So in brief, we spent quite a bit of time talking about the mask mandate. And I'm happy to entertain any questions or if others want to present. I know that I can see who's on the meeting and, you know, there's members of the Board of Health, there's Dr. Linda Fantasia's on, there's many people that have standing in this area that may be better poised to answer questions than I, but that's the LEPC report. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Chief. Linda or any other member of the Board of Health want to make just a brief comment about the mask mandate? And then we, as a Select Board, need to, I think, take a look at whether we want to take a vote to support this Board of Health mandate. But Linda or anyone else from the Board of Health like to make a comment? Linda?
Good evening, everyone. Linda Fantasia, Health Agent. Yes, the board did vote to mandate masks for indoor spaces, public spaces. And the one message the board has is that this does not mean that the vaccines are not working. They are working. Yes, we've had a few cases of breakthrough, and our case numbers have increased slightly in August. But the good fact is, we feel confident. We know what to do. We know how to respond. We know how to contain it. We know how to keep moving forward. And hopefully, this is only a temporary setback. And the board has agreed to revisit this in early October. Jean Barry, Dr. Barry is also on the call. Jean, do you want to add anything?
So I'm actually not prepared to give any kind of presentation to you guys, but in general, studies have shown that masking seems to decrease infectivity by up to 50 to 75%. And this Delta variant does seem to have very high infectivity rate, particularly amongst those who are unvaccinated, as they're infectious for a longer period of time. So we're thankfully not seeing that kind of outbreak. And even the breakthrough infections are relatively mild in Massachusetts thus far. And we're not seeing the kind of hospitalizations that people are seeing in other parts of the country. However, the kind of, the goal at this point would be to try to return to normal as quickly as possible. And we believe that masking would actually promote, quote, "returning to normal" in a more kind of smooth fashion, as opposed to letting everyone get unmasked and spread much more rapidly and kind of let things get out of control and then pull back. We're trying to be a little more proactive here, as are many other municipalities in Massachusetts and around the country. So I don't really have data to present or anything like that, so I apologize. But yeah, so I don't know. If anyone has any questions, we're happy to answer those.
Any... Yep, I do have a question, and this is probably for Linda. Linda, do we have any information about the cases that we do have in Carlisle, whether they were breakthrough cases or not?
So in August, I think we had a little jump to seven cases. And I don't have all of the medical notes on all of the cases, but at least three appeared to be breakthrough cases. And the other interesting thing is that earlier in the summer, we were seeing COVID more in younger people, which made sense because they weren't eligible to get vaccinated. But in these August cases, I'm seeing more middle age. But again, as Jean said, you know, the cases are not as serious. According to our public health nurse, of the three towns she works with, I believe there's only been one case that required hospitalization, and that particular person had other complications. So I don't know if that helps.
So I did get the numbers from Tricia McGee, the public health nurse. She documented that four of the seven are breakthrough cases. And just keeping in mind, when we're interpreting the numbers, looking at breakthrough cases, like Linda had mentioned earlier, there is something called a base rate bias. And so looking at numbers in Massachusetts, the number of breakthrough cases are certainly going to be much higher than if you're looking in a place like Oklahoma or Texas, where far fewer, you know, a smaller percentage of people are actually vaccinated. So that's going to influence the number of people with breakthrough cases.
Yeah, I know about...
All right, thank you.
Get my mask out.
If there's...
Quick question for Tom.
Yes.
Sure. So I just want to kind of understand, like, what the process is here? And having seen, like, the one section of the law that kind of came around in our packets, is a mask mandate something that the Board of Health and the Board of Selectmen need to do together? So, you know, we both need to vote on it? Or can one board or the other do it alone?
Yeah. So can you hear me if I speak from here?
No. Come a little closer to the microphone.
Podium?
The podium with the microphone.
Okay.
Good evening, Tom Harrington, Town Council. So there's two ways to do a mask mandate. There is a, there's one which requires a vote of both boards, which is under Chapter 111, Section 104. I believe that's what's before you. The blurb or the paragraph from the Board of Health indicates that they voted it under 111, 104. If you vote to support their version, it would go into effect, really, you almost get to pick when it goes into effect, since it takes both boards. So you can vote it and say it goes into effect, you know, tomorrow, Friday, whatever you want. If you don't, if the Board of, the Select Board elects not to vote for a mask mandate, the Board of Health can do it on their own under Section 31, Chapter 111. In that case, they're doing it like a regulation. So they would go through their same process, adopt it, and then publish it in a newspaper. And once it's published in a newspaper, it becomes effective.
Right. And I'm not, I'm supportive of this. I just like to know the law that I have the authority to do things under.
Right.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions or comments from Select Board members? Then I...
Is there a start and an end time?
Well, I was going to mention that. So when the LEPC discussed having this go into effect tomorrow, the 1st of September, and, Tim, that seems to work fine with Town Hall?
Yeah. We can hit the word out.
And they're already doing that at the Gleason Library. And it would mean, we discussed at the LEPC, making sure somebody checks in with ferns and then a follow-up with some of the churches. Not that we can mandate that, but just to let them know what we're doing. So if we are comfortable with implementing this as of tomorrow, effective tomorrow, then...
To be reviewed in October or something?
Yeah, to be reviewed after the Board of Health.
We should read the, what's in Board of Health.
Well, it's right here. We have it in front of us, and there's, is, they're going to...
Where is it?
Where is it? Oh, sorry. It was not in the packet. It was in our packet, right at the very end.
What was it?
At the very end. Yeah, it was at the very end. So it says, this, so I'll read you the relevant section. It says...
It was an attachment to a letter.
The Carlisle Board of Health hereby adopts an indoor face mask mandate for all indoor public spaces or private spaces open to the public within the town of Carlisle, except where an individual is unable to wear a face mask due to a medical condition or disability, and in employees' private workspace where face masks are encouraged. This mandate will be revisited by the Board of Health in early October 2021. So I would, and that's what was voted unanimously by the Board of Health on August 25th. So one possible motion for us would be a motion to support the mandate...
Can we just move what you just said with...
Well, we could just move...
I'll say move, but can I, can I add that the Board of Health and the Board, and the Select Board will review in October, just to make sure that it's...
Well, we can't change what they voted. I think we can say we will also...
And we will also...
We're making a motion here, though.
Right.
Right. We can't make a motion on behalf of the Board of Health.
We can't require them to review it.
You don't want to amend what they wrote. You want to adopt what they vote. You can then, after that, say, "And we'll review our vote in early October as well."
Okay, I thought this was a whole new motion. Okay.
And then in terms of the effective date, would we make that a separate motion as well?
I think you can tag it on at the end. So you're going to vote to support their mask mandate, and your vote becomes effective. Fill in the blank.
Okay. All right.
I move we support the Board of Health mask mandate dated August 26, 2021, to go into effect September 1st.
Second.
Keep that thing on, yeah.
Let's do a roll call vote, please. Arnold, aye.
Did somebody second?
Yes, Kate seconded.
Yeah, Ascoli, aye? Somebody was sneezing, I couldn't hear.
Do we need roll call? Brown, aye?
Modell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Do we have to do a roll call vote if we...
No, you're a liar.
We're all together now, yeah.
We're live and in person.
Well, there we go. We're so used to being on Zoom. We were doing it. Okay, great. Thank you very much to the Board of Health. We really appreciate your work on this end of the vaccine group that got together. Thank you very much. And we will be looking for your lead again in October when we review this. Thanks a lot. Thank you, Chief Fisher, as well.
Thank you.
Okay.
We're going to leave and leave you with our cleanup hitter, Donna.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck with you guys.
May I add one quick thing, Barney, that I forgot to say? I'm sorry.
Yes, of course.
Sorry about that. But I'd like to remind anyone that's listening today, that's first day of school tomorrow. And so there might be a little extra traffic on School Street. We'll have folks out there, but we'd ask everyone's indulgence and patience for these first few days of school as our, as our youngest residents start their school year off. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. So let's move on, and thank you, Chris, for waiting patiently. So we're now on item number three, which is the proposal to combine the Veterans and Celebrations Committee.
Scott Evans is on the call as well.
Yep.
Scott is here as well. Hello.
Correct. Yep, so this is Scott Evans. I'm the Chair of the Celebrations Committee. I assume you can hear me all right?
Yep, we can.
And this is Chris Eisenbees. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, okay. So if you, if you wouldn't mind, let me give you a little context behind this to introduce it. So for those who don't know, the Celebrations Committee are primary events that we handle. Our Memorial Day, we plan and conduct the Memorial Day exercises, and we are the committee that selects, annually selects, the Honored Citizen. Those are our two basic activities. We're a committee of five, although we've only had four for about the last four years since the passing of Allen Cameron. We haven't been able to fill that fifth seat. And we also lost our veteran representation on the committee. So this spring, we've got, we had four committee members, including Doug Stevenson, and both Chris Eisenbees and Doug Fairbanks agreed to join the committee. I'm sorry, what did I say? Craig? Greg? Yeah, Greg.
It's Greg. You said Doug.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, Doug, yeah. Sorry. Agreed that they would like to join the Celebrations Committee. And then, of course, Doug Stevenson resigned. And at that point, Chris introduced to me over the phone the idea of potentially combining the Celebrations Committee and the Veterans Committee. I told Chris I would get back to him, and so I polled our two members, Laura Mullins and Heidi Herring. They were both adamantly in support of that. They thought it was a good idea. And at our next face-to-face meeting where we select the Honored Citizen, Chris was then on the board. And I then checked again with both the existing committee members, Heidi and Laura, whether they were still behind combining the two, pointing out that, of course, it would take, it would mean extra work for the committee and that we'd be taking on activities for the Veterans Committee. They both were still completely in favor of that, and we agreed as a group, we would then draft a proposal, which we have presented to you. Chris, do you have anything to add to that?
I'm just making sure you don't hear my dog in the background, naturally, in this moment. It's not really a Custer Cat or something, but no, we, I think, one of the reasons the Veterans Committee had continually stayed around a membership of just two or three people is there's a lot of turnover geographically. You know, people get stationed here and then move on. So getting a critical mass and consistency and familiarity and a network, you know, I think that's why it kind of stayed at a very low ebb. So getting critical mass and joining forces with the Celebrations Committee, that rings true to me. And also, the Celebrations Committee is very well-connected around town, and as a group, we'll be able to do more than each group individually. That's all.
So we think that the combining of the two strengthens both committees. We always, in the Celebration Committee, are looking for veteran input, and now with both Chris and Greg, we've got that. And we think that this is a stronger committee going forward for both. Questions?
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
The only comment, I'm completely in support of this. The only comment, you know, that I would have is, you know, we can do it now, but we should turn this proposal into an actual charter and document that says how many people are on it and what their term is and things like that, just to make it an official new committee. Well, we can make it official, but we should document it.
Yeah. Just, you follow that, what Nathan's suggesting, that we just go through our normal process when there's a new committee? And we would use what you've provided us with to create a, what we've called a charter? And we can work that out with you all.
Yep.
Yeah, so you'd review it and everything, but I think we could consider it effective now.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd mention the last two paragraphs of the proposal. It was constructed as a charter, so you could start from there, probably over halfway done.
Oh, yeah. I see that here. Good.
And then we just need to put in what is the term and, you know, how do we stagger those terms and things like that.
Yeah. The only thing that we did not suggest or address is whether the committee should be larger now that it's combined, rather than the five committee members. But I guess my recommendation is, I think the five is sufficient, and it really is big enough for both to support both charters of both, both committees.
And it's lifetime appointment, right?
It's not, yeah. I've only, I've only been 35 years so far, so, you know, I got a ways to go. Yeah, so the next step would be, you would do something formally, but we have tacit approval, I guess, and so we can continue to try to support the activities of both committees moving forward until something formally is done, right?
Yeah, well, we will do, make, do, we will, I would suggest we, we put a motion forward tonight and go ahead and vote on it. It's just the, working out of the charter details, which we can do later.
Right, and right now, there's four, four people on...
We have, we have five right at the moment. We have Greg, Chris, Laura, Heidi, and myself.
Okay, so I'll make a motion.
Great.
I move that the Select Board combine the Celebrations Committee and the Veterans Committee into a group of five committee members, and that we appoint the existing members of the Celebrations Committee and the Veterans Committee to that newly combined committee for a term of one year. More formal documentation to be delivered later.
Is there a second?
Second.
Excellent. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, well, is there any more discussion? All right, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, passes unanimously. Thank you both.
Very good. Thank you.
All right.
All right. Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Thanks a lot. All right, let's move on to the personnel request, and I think I see Joan there. Yes. Hi, good evening, Joan.
Hello.
We're going to take up the request from the Council on Aging for a new transportation/office manager position. So Joan, we've got, if we, if we could make this a 20-minute conversation, that would be great. I know we have half an hour on the, on the agenda, but if it works out that we could do it in 20, that'd be wonderful.
I mean, I think we could do it in five, frankly, but, I mean, you have my PowerPoint, right? You saw the few little...
You do.
So, do you want me to just summarize?
Yes, please.
So you know that our Transportation and Meals on Wheels Coordinator, Debbie Farrell, who is 25 hours a week with benefits, retired on Thursday. And we have had Outreach and Program Assistant for a number of years, averaging 12 hours per week. And when we reorganized the other positions after Angela retired, it seemed to me that when we had the full-time people, that changed, you know, our need for a designated admin person. And so what I want to do is take the 12 hours from that admin position, the 25 hours from the transportation position, combine them to a 35-hour benefited position called Transportation and Office Manager, so that the person will take on some additional responsibilities that Debbie did not have, that they will still have Meals on Wheels and Transportation, but take on some additional volunteer responsibilities, senior tax worker responsibilities, and also provide overall kind of office management and admin support to the Social Services Manager, the Program Manager... and also provide overall kind of office management and admin support to the Social Services Manager, the Program Manager, myself. And that would be basically cost neutral. You can see it's $80 a year different and that assumes if it was graded out of five, which I don't know where it will be graded. But I don't think it's going to cost the town anything and the LRTA does pay for $20,000 worth of that position per our agreement with them. So my thought was, you know, having four full-time people with four workstations in our tiny little office makes a lot of sense. Then when I started, we had seven people. Five part-time and two full-time. So it just seems like a good way to structure things and that it would end up benefiting the seniors, the town, you know, the staff. So I think it makes sense and I'm looking for approval. I've shared the job description with, with Tim, so we want to be able to move forward and get it rated so that I could put a person in that position, you know, officially, rather than, you know, right now Miriam is taking over those hours and she's providing that service, but I'd like to get it, you know, in a more official capacity.
All right, thank you. Questions? Comments?
I have a couple of questions.
Nathan?
So my first question is, what is the, the benefits and insurance costs for this role? Cause it's, it's, it's going from, you know, two part-time to now benefit-eligible.
No, Debbie was already benefit-eligible at 25 hours. So it's, it's already, I already had a benefit position for 25 hours.
Okay. And my second question is, or I guess then I have three questions. My second, second question is, well, I'll go to my third one, because I've got my second one.
It's re-greathing now, that's what makes you.
Yeah, exactly. So you're going, so is, is it reasonable to really assume that this one person full-time will be able to do the job that the other people were doing, you know, as two, two people assuming on different hours and things and, you know, you're not going to be coming back and asking for another part-time position to backfill anything?
No, not at all. I mean, you know, I'm taking 25 and 12 hours, which is 37, and I'm requesting 35. But my, what I've noticed is when you have one person with a set of responsibilities, there's efficiencies that you don't have when you have people job-sharing the jobs. So we used to have two program assistants and we had, you know, two different people doing outreach and different people doing social work services and it was, you know, easier for balls to get dropped or for things not to be accomplished. I think that you know, we, we all, I and Carol, who's our Social Service Manager and Linda, our Program Manager, we all handle admin things when we're the one in the office because through the pandemic, we've had staggered schedules, you know, for obvious reasons. So who's ever there answers the phone? Who, who's ever there registers people for events? I mean, we all kind of pitch in as a team, so I don't envision asking for additional staff. I think four full-time staff is a right size for the COA. And even though our, our total number of hours is slightly smaller than it was when I started, like I said, going from seven people to four people, I think is going to be a better quality of service and I don't think that we would need more staff in the foreseeable future.
Okay. And I remember my second question is, is, what's the likelihood that this would come in at higher than a grade five? And what is this grade five?
You know, that's a really hard question because my brief experience with the way things were rated was, was kind of diverse. You know, they rated the Social Services Manager in a completely different way than the Program Manager. But since I've written all the job descriptions, I can say that I feel like the, the Transportation and Office Manager is written very similarly to the Program Manager. They require the same type of education. They have the same like level of responsibilities and independent work, so I would be surprised if they were, if it was rated higher than a five. But like, I have, I don't know. I mean, Tim can speak to that better than I can. He has a lot more experience with the Personnel Board than, than I do.
Yeah, currently the Transportation Coordinator is a grade four position. So they, they would have to agree that the position had been augmented or was, you know, more, more than what it was to upgrade to a grade five. It very well might, you know, stay the same. It'll be a grade four, but that will be up, up to the Personnel Board to decide. They have seen the job description informally and they do have some questions they'd like to ask Joan, so I can put them together to talk about that in the near future.
So tonight, what we would be doing is voting to approve this change in order to send it on to the Personnel Committee.
Correct.
For review.
Yep.
Okay.
What do we do if it actually costs more? What, what if the Select Board, if the Personnel Board? What if they come back and they say, you know, that this $80 cost is actually $2,500 cost?
So we'd have, we'd have a couple of options. I mean, one thing would be, I could do the math and I could say, okay, we're gonna have it 32 hours or we're gonna have it 30 hours. I mean, if we had to make that work, we could. I don't think it's going to go up to rate levels from what I've seen how they do things, but it's possible and I could reduce the hours. So that's probably what I would do.
Nathan, I think she, this additional cost of $80 was based on a grade five. If it's a grade four, it'll be less.
And savings.
Right. I don't know what the step is.
Right, right, but.
So. How much is it?
And I'm in favor of this. I just want, is there some, something, some, I don't, don't know offhand, so I mean.
A thousand, two thousand, 10,000?
Yeah, it, it, the hourly, it, it, I think a grade, grade five is like 25 or 26 to $32 an hour, something like that.
Well, I put it in the packet. I put, that's what I assumed was the grade, the grade five, which is 26.54 an hour. So that was the assumption that got to the $80. If they, if they did it higher than that and the budget couldn't accommodate it, I could reduce the hours.
We could, we could, we could approve it pending Personnel Board review and provided that the net cost of the town is less than.
It seems to me what we're approving is for it to go forward to the, to the Personnel Board. We're not, we're not.
Exactly. We're not approving the position.
We're not approving the position. We're approving it to move forward to the Personnel Board.
Yeah, then once we have all the information, we go. When is the Personnel Board meeting next?
Meeting later this month. They met last evening. So they'll, they'll meet again in a few weeks.
Yep.
Good. All right, so that makes sense. So may I have a motion to approve that this proposal be sent to the Personnel Board?
I move that this proposal be forwarded, sent forward to the Personnel Board. So move works as well.
So move. I'll second it.
You know, I think, have you noticed David, that sitting next to him seems to elicit certain?
That's why Nathan sits way over there.
All right, all those, any more discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Excellent. Motion carries. All right Joan, on to the Personnel Board.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. And let us, let's see, you know, Donna, rather than keep you waiting, why don't we go to the Personnel Policies, which, yeah, we were supposed to be on at 7:50?
Is Kim waiting for us and?
Kim's not coming tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, that's been rescheduled to the September 14th meeting. So, and is anyone waiting? Tim, on these appointments? Either the crack or?
No one on the call.
Okay, so let's.
Yeah, I think it, yeah, it could be done anytime.
So we'll do those later then and let's move to the Personnel Policies. And in particular, so we have two things. One, we have the revisions that Donna has made. Thank you very much Donna Brewer is here from our, from Town Council and then we have a very specific decision to make around the holiday. Now that we have Juneteenth as another holiday and if you look in your packet, Tim has written up a description or sort of the, the basic options on that. Why don't we take that first, if that's all right Donna? Sure. And so let's move to.
Nobody on the call right now?
There were a few residents and a mosquito reporter, but nobody, yeah, for this item.
All right, so let's go to all right, so there's a memo in your packet, I think it's on page 25. And it's describing the choices we have if, since we have to include Juneteenth now as a holiday. Tim, do you want to just briefly recap what you've?
Yep, no, I can.
Out here? Okay, thank you.
Right, the, the, the Board's directive was to look at the cost of adding a new holiday, which is approximately $60,000 according to Priscilla. So that would be the cost of adding the Juneteenth holiday and it was also a desire not to increase the net number of holidays. So my recommendation there is that the day after Thanksgiving is the least traditional of the official holidays and that it's not, it's not a family holiday like Christmas or Thanksgiving proper. So that if we had to lose a holiday, my recommendation would be go back to take the day after Thanksgiving off the schedule. It wasn't that many years ago when it was not a holiday and most employees, you know, voluntarily took the day off and it wasn't wasn't such a big deal. The, the town added it a few years ago. We also added it to the police and the dispatcher's contracts and that would have to be the subject of collective bargaining. If the Board wanted to make that change, you could make the change in the Personnel Policies that would apply to the non-union folks, but you'd have to address it with the unions separately. There was also the kind of anomaly of the, the town observing Saturday holidays on Fridays and Sunday holidays on Mondays and Donna said that was not common practice. I guess my recommendation there was to kind of leave that one alone. I think it, it wouldn't be well-received, I think, if, if we made that change and people are accustomed to getting those Saturday holidays on a Friday and I, similarly, I don't expect losing a holiday is gonna make anyone jump up and down either, but if the desire is to, to cap the, I think a 12 holidays officially now, if we add a Juneteenth and took, took back the, the other one, it just would have to be addressed with the unions at some point in time. Cause it's, it's one of their enumerated holidays in there.
What are those two contracts up for?
The police expires in June, so. Yeah, yeah, and the dispatchers the year after that, so.
And the school is coming up.
Yeah, the school doesn't. Just asking a practical question. And it's more about, you know, kind of clarity of schedule for the residents of Carlisle. If everybody's basically taking the day after Thanksgiving off, does that mean that Town Hall is actually closed? Or has it just made it unclear by not declaring it as a holiday and people may be coming here and? Well, you could just put up a note, you know, such and such office will be closed on such and such a day.
Oh no, you, why do you close it? It's a work day. No, but if they take the day off, right?
Well, then take it as a personal.
Right, 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 but you know, you don't want somebody showing up to see, say cons come and then.
Right, I mean, if effectively everybody's taking the day off.
Well, if they are, they may not.
I mean, it's a good idea to put it out. I think that's what Tim was saying, was that effectively everybody was voluntarily taking that day off, right? Not everybody would, right?
Not, not, the majority of employees did. There would, there would be a skeleton crew that would work the Friday.
Some people might decide that's a great time to catch up on stuff, because it's.
Oh, it is, it's, it actually is a good time to.
Right, so I think you're right. A note saying, you know, if you have, if you're planning to, we are open on Friday to blah, 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 but if you're planning to come in, please check with the person you see, because they may have.
Yeah, we could, we could post a website in advance. We call the employees and we could post it in advance on a website if offices weren't going to be staffed, but.
Are there, are there positions at Town Hall that are expected to kind of be, or departments at Town Hall that are expected to be staffed when Town Hall is open? Are there certain departments that, you know, you just kind of expect would be staffed?
Like the Town Clerk.
The Town Clerk or Task Collector, I suppose, you know, if someone were coming here to perform a function, they would expect to be greeted by somebody.
If I can just add, the current policy and it's included in, in the sections, both for vacation and personal leave say that you have to get prior approval for them. So if you are all of a sudden going to have absolutely nobody in Town Hall, then you'd be working with Tim to make sure that you had that skeleton crew that you're talking about.
Sapping, right.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, you can just close the door, yeah.
Right, right, yeah, okay. So I guess my, my question led to a point of, some people would be, some people really would be losing that day. It, it may not be that they can elect to take the day after Thanksgiving.
That's true, no, that's, that's true, yeah. Some people would see that as a loss, yeah.
How does, how does it get to be 60,000 with, I mean, how many employees are we talking about? I would have thought 60,000 if we'd been talking about all the
Teachers and everything.
Teachers and everything, yeah. How did it get to be so expensive?
I don't think the question was asked specifically about a summertime holiday, right? I think it was the cost of a day of work.
Yeah, yeah, I, I can follow up with Priscilla on that, but.
But it's not counting school employees, right?
I, and I think it's.
That's what worries me, because I make a decision.
Honestly, it's a clock, I mean, it's, it's not an additional holiday, it has to be added.
I mean, I think we came out and said we would prefer not to holiday.
Correct.
So it costs something. I mean, we're arguing about whether a grade five and a grade six, which is two grand and here, oh, just 30,000. It's a lot of money. It's a lot to add a holiday. So I don't think.
Well, I'd like to know, I'd like to know.
You'd like to know the reason.
All kinds of reasons. Because closing Town Hall on Thanksgiving, or the day after Thanksgiving is also somewhat of a cost.
We're not closing.
No, we'd be opening.
Okay, we'd be opening it. But it's, well, or let's put it this way, opening it with nobody coming is a cost.
A little custodial cost, somebody has to do it.
Yeah, so I mean, there's costs either way.
Yeah, but I mean, conceptually, I guess.
Employee morale as well.
Yeah, well, there's.
So.
Well, wait a minute, you're not taking, no, wait a minute, I gotta push back on that. You're not taking away anything. You're adding a holiday they didn't have. Taking away a holiday you did have. But you're also, that, by the way, you could say cynically, that's a great day to actually show up to work, because there's not so much to do and you get to catch up on stuff that may be.
Yeah, that's.
I think we're overthinking it.
Yeah, but I, I like to make my decisions on some sort of facts and so I'm just questioning where the, it just seems like a lot more money than I would.
Yeah.
I could understand it town-wide, if we're talking to teachers and the, and the police and every, and, you know, but I don't understand it just for the Town Hall.
I can follow up with Priscilla. It, I, I don't know about the school employee that does include the police.
It includes the police?
Yes.
But that has to be negotiated out. Which we may or may not be able to do. And, okay.
Well, do we need to, we, is the feeling that we want to wait on this until the next meeting?
Well, the cost doesn't change though, if we take a holiday away. I mean.
No, I mean, she wants to know the cost.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I, I get it.
I can, I can follow up with Priscilla.
It doesn't impact, well, let me ask this. Is it, are we putting it through, whenever it is we voted, if we vote for it, does that immediately impact this coming Thanksgiving? And the June 19th of this year? It's a this-year thing, right?
It was June 19th, 2022.
Yeah, but I think Juneteenth wouldn't be, yeah, till next, next year.
Inside our current fiscal.
Yeah, inside the, well, we can, we can say that it goes into effect next fiscal year.
Yeah, yeah, right.
But then you're gonna have an extra holiday this fiscal year.
Yep.
You don't enact it now. You are gonna have a holiday. Cause that holiday's federal.
What holiday?
Out of June 19th.
Juneteenth.
Yeah.
Juneteenth.
Oh yes. You skated this year because it was on a Saturday.
Oh, you're saying because it was Saturday, right.
So, I mean, my, my, I mean, two weeks wait won't matter, but.
So what's the sense of the group? Who would like to wait two weeks to take a final vote on this?
Well, I don't, I don't think I need to take, to wait, because I'm not sure the cost is really what's driving. I just think it's really hard to take something away. And one of our priorities is staff and staff morale and building staff and, you know, I mean, that is, we're gonna get to that. I just, I worry about doing this. I worry about just saying, we're gonna take away the. Why do you say to? Why do you say to take away if you're giving another holiday?
Because they're used to having the day after Thanksgiving off.
But they have personal vacation days.
It creates a four-day weekend.
But everybody has the opportunity.
And a lot of people, let me finish, you asked me a question. And so it creates a four-day weekend.
Yeah.
And that, you know, Thanksgiving is a high travel, you know, go away and visit with your family or family coming in. I just, I worry about, I think it is, I think it is a takeaway. Certainly, it's a takeaway for those people who are told, no, they can't take the day off because Town Hall is open. So I, you know, that's, that's where I see it as a takeaway. It's something that, as a family, they've, they've had the day before. There's a difference between saying you have an extra Monday and you have a four-day weekend to spend with your family. So that, that's why I'm just thinking out loud now. That's why I'm just being cautious about, you know, how, how does this match with what we're doing for our priorities and what is the message?
Yeah, well, what are, what are the other holidays? I mean, like Columbus Day is always an oddball one, right?
You don't have the luxury, that's a federal.
It is.
It is not, it is not.
No, certain ones aren't. Hey, well, Patriot's Day is another one, right? I mean, like, we lost Patriot's Day this year. Everybody was, you know, because it's school vacation week, right? And, and all of a sudden, our company took it away, but, you know.
Yeah, but I think, I think you were telling us which ones, like, all of them, like, because we're a town, Massachusetts Town Government, are there any on that list that we could take away?
So the ones on this list, the Town Hall is required to be closed on state holidays. So that's what you have. You don't have to pay for all of these state holidays. But again, that's been, your policy has been to pay for a hall, a state holiday where Town Hall is required to close again, so.
Talking about a takeaway, I mean.
Yeah, now you're talking.
Um, Tim, do we have personal days or maybe I should ask Donna?
We do have personal days.
Personal days. So, so what's wrong, I mean, that's what my company does.
Yeah, take it personal.
We, if people want to take that Friday, they take it as a personal day if they.
That's what they did before.
Take it as a vacation day.
They can take it as a vacation day, but that's, you know, personal days that you can plot in. I think the one thing that, of the object, or the concerns that Nathan raised that resonates with me is if we do force some people to man the booth, so to speak.
Right.
When they do plan to go away or do something. And I think that's why I encourage, if we're going to do it, and I do support it, we do it sooner rather than later to give people time to decide and go to their supervisor and say, and make sure it's socialized as, you know, in my opinion, it's socialized as not a takeaway. We're adding a new three-day weekend that you didn't have before. And you're trying to give you ample time to plan how you want to handle that day. You want to take it off, check with your supervisor, plan for the day now, you know. At least neutral, if not positive.
Do you have any sense, Tim, of generally what's happened in the past with that Friday?
The, the fact that Friday after Thanksgiving?
Yeah.
Right. Well, it's, it's been a holiday for maybe seven or eight years officially. Before that, it was a day that a lot of people, you know, took off. They use either personal time or, or, you know, vacation time.
And the, and Town Hall was open?
And Town Hall was open and there were, you know, very few people working, but there was a, you know, kind of a, you know, spare crew, but that was, yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Can you tell us, if you remember, if you know, why, why it was added? I mean.
I don't recall. I know it was added to the personnel policies first because it came up in the subsequent bargaining sessions that you gave this holiday to the non-union people and we wanted to.
That's also the thing that really worries me, that, you know, it's the union contracts which wag the tail of the dog, or, you know, wag the dog rather, and not the other way around. So if we take it away from the non-union people, it does not guarantee that we're going to be able to wrestle it away from the union people, thus saving, the big savings. And then we'll damage morale on top of everything. So, I mean, I just don't want to.
You're talking about the police and what's the other union?
Dispatches.
And teachers.
And teachers.
With teachers, it's not relevant to the teachers.
Yeah, it's going to be separate.
How is it relevant to teachers?
Well, Thanksgiving isn't relevant to teachers.
Neither one's relevant. Juneteenth, they're gone. I mean, there's occasional time in the pre-global warming era where you'd run into the following week. It ain't going to happen, guaranteed. So it's not really irrelevant.
Okay, so forget the teachers, but the other, the other bargaining units.
Thirty people, right?
Something like that. How many police?
You know.
Twenty-four and six?
Yeah, ten or twelve full-timers and about twenty part-timers, yeah.
That's half, right?
Yeah.
No, not half. What percentage of staff is that?
Of non-teaching staff. How many employees, you have two hundred or something?
About two hundred total, yeah. Including, including teachers, yeah, maybe two fifteen or two twenty-five with, with the teachers.
Yeah, so thirty is almost half of the non-teaching staff.
Yeah.
Well, if we're ever, I mean, either we add the holiday and we're done with it. If we're, there's never a, if you're trying to bring the bargaining units in alignment with the non-bargaining units, you always have to start with one. Right, we got whipsawed in the first half because we gave it to the non-bargaining unit and the bargaining unit said, quite foul.
Yeah.
And now you're going to have the other way, but it's, you know, I think either we commit to doing it or we don't. If we don't, let's just, let's just add the holiday and be peaceful with it.
And could we, does it work? I guess next year we have to give Juneteenth, and that would be before the end of the fiscal year.
Right.
We could leave that as it is, not change the Friday after Thanksgiving, try to negotiate with the police union to give up that holiday. If we're successful, then we make the change.
You'll have no argument with the union if you haven't already done it at the staff side.
Yeah.
They'll tell you to go back.
Yeah, we're not going to get it back.
But you, maybe.
You'll only get it back if you, in my opinion, if you've already taken it away from the town side.
What's your thoughts, Luke?
I don't think we're getting it back either way. I mean, even if we take it away from it, I don't think.
Well, if you feel that way, then, then we're talking about even smaller segments. Now we're talking about.
That, that, that's why I wanted to know.
Right, with the exact cost.
And you know what? I give up. Let's just add the holiday and be.
Because if it's that little and we're not going to be able to use it as a bargaining chip, why damage our.
Okay, yeah, fair enough.
Relationship with our staff.
I, I acquiesce because I think, you know, we're a little chintzy on the benefits and all this and that, so.
But I would still like to know what the real number is.
It'd be nice to know what it costs.
Because if it is indeed sixty, then I'm more willing to do it.
Well, it couldn't possibly be sixty, though.
That's why I don't think it could possibly.
How many?
I can check, that, that's the number that Priscilla gave me, but she might have been including the schools, so.
But that's two hundred people and we decided that the number affected now, it sounds like it's like thirty people, right?
Yeah.
Well, sixty thousand divided by two hundred is.
Thirty.
Thirty dollars.
Teacher, you should have.
Right, and so, I don't know if that sounds right.
It doesn't because that's what, one hour.
Thirty, it's three hundred.
Sixty thousand divided by two hundred.
You take, sixty thousand has five zeros.
Right, that's a daily rate, right? So I'm saying, it's more, if you take three hundred times thirty, you're nine thousand dollars. So nine thou, ten times, ten thousand. So let's, we're arguing over ten thousand, so why don't we just give them a holiday?
Just give them a holiday.
Okay, I, I'm.
Nathan, are you comfortable with that? We just add the additional holiday and do not change the holiday after Thanksgiving?
I am comfortable with that.
Okay.
Given our other priority.
Okay, so do we need to make any motion on that or is that already?
I think we need to.
I think when we adopt the personnel policies, when we.
One day.
Okay, all right.
Just to be clear.
Yeah.
Because it's, we are adding Juneteenth.
Correct.
And we are not taking away the day after Thanksgiving.
Correct. We are adding an additional holiday.
We're adding an additional holiday. And that's actually an additional benefit to our employees who don't get to bargain.
Yes.
And I think it's important to do it the right way. Okay.
Okay, great. Then Donna, what, now, was there anything else, Tim, in your memo that we had to deal with? No, right?
Well, I think the, the practice of observing Saturday holidays on Fridays universally.
Right, and so your recommendation is we.
Typical, but I, that's the way we've done it and people would.
Is everybody here comfortable with that?
That's a clear takeaway. Yeah.
All right, so we're comfortable.
You could say, well, June nineteenth doesn't.
Okay. All right, so let's move on then and see, let's go, see where we are in terms of the revisions that Donna made and if there are anything in particular in there, Donna, that you want us to.
Yeah, I didn't get redlined.
We just got them without the red lines.
Right.
I have no idea.
So what, would you like to point our attention to things that we need to address tonight, Donna?
Yes, let's, something that's new that was added to this is a draft sick leave bank, which is section twenty-four dash eight.
Okay, so hang on a second.
Take a look at that.
It's way down there. Twenty-four.
What page did, I'm sorry, what page is it?
Twenty-four dash eight is the section.
Okay, so.
It's a whole section without it.
Eight seventy-three of the packet.
Page seventy-three.
Yes, this whole section is new.
How much sick is, what's the sick time presently before the bank? Is it annual or is it accrued?
Accrued. Twelve days, you only accrued monthly.
I only have fifteen nine pages.
Twenty-four dash eight on.
Page forty-seven. Before sick leave bank, that's what they have?
Yes, yeah.
And how, what's the max that could accrue to?
I always do that.
I think a hundred and twenty days is the max you can accrue.
Forty-nine of the P D M.
The non-union don't get paid when they retire, the police do. They get a percentage of the non-used sick days. So there's really no advantage to hoarding them because they all go away.
So this is a bank that they accrue on their own?
Yes, so this is not costing the town anything other than you will be paying out some, some people will be using sick days that otherwise would just expire and not be used. So there is some cost to the town to that, but otherwise it's just employees helping other employees.
Oh, you mean people donate their unused.
People donate their unused and accrued sick days for people who have otherwise used up all their time.
I have, I have fifty days in my bank and Luke gets sick and I'm like, and so I say, I don't, you know, I donate twenty-five days to the bank.
Right.
So I take my balance down when his goes up.
Yeah, because you're getting, you're bumping up to your limit first. Normally it's because you bumped up to your limit and you're really not.
But do we have an L T D and, I mean, isn't there a point in time when you're that sick for that many days you switch to some kind of L T D?
We don't have a long-term disability insurance, do we?
I think, I think we do.
We do? I thought we, that was, I thought that was a question that we had that was going to get answered.
Short and long term.
Long-term disability, even if you've got the insurance policy, it's not going to pay you your rate, your regular pay rate.
What about short term?
Short term does, up to a limit.
It doesn't start kicking in after a certain amount of days.
It does what kick in?
Short term and long term.
Well, yeah, so short term, the employee has to apply for it.
Okay.
So if they've got the sick leave bank, they're probably not.
Push that out.
They can push that.
They're not required by a certain date to convert.
Correct, correct.
So this would allow them, so they're, they're sick but not in the long-term disability sense. They're sick in some extended illness.
Right.
We're talking about the person that gets leukemia and has to have themselves transplant to the hospital.
I get it, I understand.
And there's a couple of things I threw in here that you can consider specifically under twenty-four point eight point one.
Yeah.
I just threw in that they can apply up to fifty days of sick leave from the sick leave bank. That number is just pulled out of thin air. It can be any number you want or it can be unlimited.
So the bank is the, so the bank is a, like, I donate to the bank and then Luke needs it, he applies to the bank? Or can I donate just to Luke and say?
No, so he applies, you donate to the bank, he applies to the bank. And when you get down to twenty-four point eight point four, you'll see, and twenty-eight point, twenty-four point eight point three, the request will go to Tim to use days out of the sick leave bank. And then the question is whether you want to give Tim discretion, whether to grant that leave or anybody who applies to him, if there's time available in the bank, he will grant it.
Yeah, puts a lot of responsibility on the bank.
Maybe it could be a committee, not a committee, but, I don't know, Tim, Tim and somebody.
Yeah, I see. I've seen some sick banks set up where it's the town administrator, the treasurer and the accountant are like a committee.
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, I think they.
Maybe you do it that way.
It's not that we don't trust you, I just don't think you need to have that kind of stress.
It's not like you can take the bank, sick leave bank to the Bahamas, I mean.
No, but it's, but it's a lot of pressure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Right, and, and then, and animus, if, for instance, there was some reason he needed to say no.
Right, well, exactly.
You know.
Right, so people who, like, retire with unused sick time, I can see them donating, like, just why.
Yeah, they can't take.
Can't use it anyway.
Can't take it with them, right.
Would other people, you think, just donate? Or would there be, again, like, you know, like a blood bank, like, so, we've had a disaster, people donate specifically because they know they need it. I mean, is there a thing like so-and-so is out with leukemia for six months and then people move to donate knowing that?
Sometimes that happens, I think.
Either's okay.
I guess you could set it up that way.
You could set it that way.
There's nothing wrong with that, right?
Well, word of mouth gets around.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have to designate it to Luke if Luke's the one who's sick, everybody knows I donated. It's there, right? Everybody donates ten days, so it's good. Fifty days, then boom, right?
Yeah, occasionally you have the opposite problem where someone says, I don't want so-and-so to use my days.
Right, well, that's just, that's another thing, too.
I don't think you did, you don't want to let them do that.
So how, how often is this an issue?
Well, we, we haven't had it, so it, it.
We had situations where people have had to go.
Oh, no, very rarely, I mean, you know, just a catastrophic illness.
How many fifty-day periods of time can I take in a year?
Seven.
It doesn't seem.
You just take it when you need it, so if you.
But I can, I can do up to fifty days. I can do up to fifty days in what period of time?
That's up to you guys, whatever you want to say.
Yeah, I guess.
I, I, I thought that we had decided not to do this when we last talked about it, so.
I thought we were going to get more information about.
That could be it. Maybe I just.
About the long-term and the short-term policies that we have, currently have available. And we were also going to see how the school was doing it. That's what I, you know, got.
But I think that's why you have a banker, that's why you have a gatekeeper or a committee, right?
Right, right.
Because they'll evaluate it, you know, if, if somebody comes, oh, my back hurts, and all, you know, you're on your own, right? But if it's, you know, I, I think the reason you have this is really some sort of catastrophic.
Exactly.
You know, somebody needs surgery, somebody has cancer, somebody is looking, you know, it's, and, and that's why you have this.
And they go through all of theirs and.
Yeah, because it's the financial hardship that, that, you know, I mean, even going down to sixty percent, I mean, it could wipe somebody out, you know?
Yeah.
Especially with all the medical bills that they have to pay a certain percentage of because we don't pay.
Well.
Very good percentage on that. So I, I'm, yeah, I don't know if fifty is the right number, you know? I mean, I don't know if we should have people checking more often. And, and, you know, I'm not a big fan of the non-consecutive thing.
Well, the non-consecutive thing is, like, if you are doing, like, some chemo or something, you're not, it's, you're not, you're not in the hospital anymore. You could work in between, but you do need to go back in.
Yeah, no, I, no, I, I...
Or like your COVID shot, you want to do it, you know?
Yeah, no, and I fully understand the reasoning behind it, but yeah, it's, it's the whole thing, if you get somebody that is not necessarily, you know, is playing the system a bit, right?
But that's why, yes, but that's also why you have, I want to have a board.
Yeah, exactly, I think, yeah.
To say, you know, so they need to come with, you know, documentation from the doctor, who then would say, this is what the course of treatment might look like, and then they apply for, you know, with that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, well...
So do we want to hold off on this, uh, sick bank, sick leave bank, to, um, consider it further, gather more information and we could, Donna, are there other things in your, um, revised policies that we should look at tonight? I would say we could give it another, you know, uh, I'm just thinking about our timing here, so we could give it another, you know, five to ten minutes.
A couple of quick things then, I'll get out of the way.
Okay, let's do that, and then I can ask again about that.
If you turn to, uh, section nineteen...
Yep, which one?
So nineteen dash twelve. You'll see there that, uh, in the first paragraph under coworkers, um, will pay for up to three visits to a substance abuse professional.
Mm-hmm.
That number, you can set whatever number you want, and, um, then the question is whether we will, whether we want to pay for them, or we do not, we're not required by law to pay for them. So right now it's written to say that you're going to pay for three visits to a substance abuse professional, um, that is, that is something that you guys can decide.
I'm sorry, which, where is that specifically? I'm looking under coworkers.
Yeah, is, doesn't, it's the first sentence under coworkers, say the town will pay for up to three visits to a S A P?
No.
Oh, it doesn't?
It says, any other employee with a concern regarding possible evidence of alcohol or drug abuse.
Well, maybe it got renumbered, wait, are you, under the, um, might not be nineteen anymore.
We're under finding help, nineteen dash twelve.
Yeah, nineteen dash twelve?
Yeah, okay.
Nope, it doesn't, uh...
What, how's your re...
Goes supervisors as number one, then two is coworkers, and number three is self-identification, so...
This is any employee with a concern regarding possible evidence of alcohol or drug.
No, it's on, if, if you scroll down, it's in part B.
Ah, employee assistance program.
Yeah, yeah, it's on, beginning of page forty-two, the town will pay for up to three visits.
Ah, thank you, okay, yep, yep. Right.
We had a question as to how much did those visits cost?
Yeah, and that I don't know, I was saying Maya might know how much they cost, but I don't.
Um, that was one of the questions I sent you, and I thought you had answered it, so I'm trying to find my emails from you about all that.
They copay for a specialist, I think, forty-five dollars a visit, so that would be the, be out of pocket.
Yeah.
The actual office visit is probably a couple hundred dollars.
Can't find anything on this computer.
I mean, I think this is an important thing for the town to provide to an employee, and that, um, paying for three visits seems...
What was it presently, what is it presently?
It's not in there.
We didn't have this at all, did we?
Yeah, this is new.
Yeah.
Drug and alcohol policy.
I support this being there.
Yep.
So leave it three day, three visits paid?
Yeah.
Is that the sense? Okay.
Sorry, not to go back to the bank thing, but I was just thinking, can we actually request medical information from individuals in order to approve it? Is, or is that, there's got to be some sort of HIPAA thing there, right?
No, so the, HIPAA gets overused a lot, so if you are asking, if they're coming to you and asking you to give them sick leave, yes, you can ask them for a note from the doctor.
Agreementation, okay.
To substantiate that request.
Oh, excellent, okay.
They would have it provided.
Yeah, they would.
So then they waive the HIPAA.
All right, so, anyway, so we're comfortable with this, um, the three, the town paying for three visits for, um, um, this kind of assistance, what else do you have there, Donna?
So if you go to the end of this, section nineteen, uh, contacts, who do you want to give as a contact for assistance with drug and alcohol problems?
Oh, this is, um, you mean people that someone might go to for, for the counseling?
Right, well, no, just to even find out where the counseling is, you know, somebody who's got a...
Oh, town hall staff, you mean?
Town hall staff, or you can make it somebody through Maya's E A P program, you know, that you can tell them, you can send them there.
Oh, I see.
You just need to insert who that person would be.
Ah, okay.
I think having it somebody not here would be beneficial.
Probably would be good, yeah.
So if, if, Tim, if you could help me out...
I'd get you the contact with Maya, yeah.
Yeah, get it from Maya, that would be great.
Yeah, the only thing is it comes up when they ask for the reimbursement, right?
Oh.
Yeah, but this, yeah, this is, they just want to talk through it, right? They want to understand what all the...
They're gonna, right, what their options are, how they can get help.
At that point, they would be told, okay, and, you know, Tim is going to learn about it because we're going to be paying for it.
Right, yeah, okay.
They just want to have as few, uh, what's the word? Barriers to them getting help as possible, right?
Yeah, right.
And, you know, any sort of anonymity that we can keep in there, I think, is...
Is good.
Ideal, you know? So maybe there's even a way to set that up, that they could get reimbursed a different way, I don't know, I just...
Maya has a program, and I think it's just all done through them, so if we get the...
We can hand it over and...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. They approve or not approve.
The last thing I'll just mention, it's, it's not something that you need to worry about for this policy, we, we had talked, Barney, about the military leave, that you wanted to talk about that.
Yes.
All I want to raise for you guys is to consider whether you want to accept, uh, general laws, chapter thirty-three, section fifty-nine, and I can send it to you, if you accept it, then you would give more generous policy, um, more generous benefits to somebody who's on military leave, which would be up to thirty days, at the moment the policy is two weeks, um, but under this section, if you, or statute, if you adopt it, then you can give more generous, but since it has to be adopted by the town, accepted by the town, it's not something that would go in this policy right now, I will send the section, uh, to Tim so he can share it with you, and you guys can consider whether you want to put it on a, a town meeting warrant.
Ah, okay, okay.
Why do we have to put on a warrant?
Because that's how it gets accepted.
The whole thing?
Yeah, that's sec, that statute.
Not, not the policies, but that particular statute about veterans.
Right.
It's actually active military, rather than, I mean...
I'm sorry, okay.
Which, which, uh...
It's not in here.
You've got regular military leave in here, which is set by federal, federal law, that's the U S E E R A, uh, statute, and that's in section, well, in my version, it's section twenty-six point zero, but all I'm saying is, apart from those benefits that they get by law, you can even grant more generous benefits if that's what you choose to do.
Got it.
So you can consider that at a future meeting.
Okay.
Uh, after I've shared the statute with Tim, and he can share it with you guys.
Okay.
And that's really all I had.
So Donna, back to the drug, I got two questions on the drug thing for you, one is, you have section twenty, which is sort of the motherhood statement that we, like a drug-free workplace, following the testing, wouldn't you really put that first as context, or why are we testing?
So one is required by, uh, certain drivers and C D L people, it's required by federal law. Uh, I can certainly move it around and put the drug-free workplace that applies to everybody first.
I mean, it seems to put an imprint on the why part, um, that's, that's a suggestion. The other question is, in, in nineteen itself, I'm seeing a lot of prescriptive description about how the drug test is performed and when, but it doesn't say unless they miss it, who? Who performs the test?
Yeah, that's all required by federal law, they ident...
Is it referenced somewhere?
Uh, let me see. I think it is in there somewhere.
I mean, it's got the D O T regulations, but I mean, does it mean like the police to it?
No.
The private, yeah.
No, it's somebody outside of town hall.
So if we have, like, probable cause or there's an accident, I mean, one of the things referenced is somebody gets in an accident, you suspect, or even if you don't suspect, I suppose, drug or alcohol played a role, you want to get a test within, you know, a short period of time, it says you should do that, but, like, how does that actually work?
Yeah, there's a whole, it's a rather a complicated protocol that's in the federal regs on how you have to get that done.
Okay.
If you want, I can share that with you.
I mean, I don't need to know it, I want to know that it's clear, like, to the reader, like, presumably our employees are going to read this, right?
Yeah.
That it's clear to people.
Well, they need to, they will, yeah.
Well, and that weekend, as a small town, is it practical, can we do it even, like?
Right, how quickly could we have somebody?
How quickly can we do it, yeah?
Right.
Pre-employment, I get, post-accident, let's do post-accident.
So there is a section in here in the policy on how the tests are conducted, and it does say that testing is conducted in a two-stage process?
You know, I get the process part, but I'm reading, like, on page thirty-four, post-accident, you know, with all tests, alcohol tests should be conducted within two hours, in no case more than eight hours, so, I don't know, you know, I mean, I don't want to discredit anybody with an abstract example, but a, um, a public works driver is driving on a Saturday from the transfer station and there's an accident, I mean, what do we actually do on Saturday afternoon at five when it happened to get that all time? I don't, I don't know how we do that.
I don't know the answer to that, I can find it out, I do know the testing does have to be conducted through D H S certified facilities.
I presume that there's some twenty-four seven place you can call that makes sure that, I mean, the police are going to arrive because it's an accident, right? And they know how to do that stuff, but they're not the ones doing it, so...
They are not the ones doing it.
I, I just don't want to put something down on paper we have to do that we don't practically know how to do, we have to train, again, it's not really, it's not the policy that I'm questioning, I'm just saying the mechanics, the...
It's more the implementation.
We have to be ready, if we're saying we're doing it, we got to make sure the police know that they call the X play, they don't just do the D U I test that I guess they do if, if I am in an accident, but...
Correct.
They have to do something else, they have to know that something else, right?
Maybe that's more, I completely agree with you, John.
Yeah, but if they're not, you know, in this town, if they have an accident in another town, how do we...
Well, there's all that stuff, so I don't know, I, I just, I don't know, it just seems...
Apparently the federal... Needs to be a known procedure for implementing.
There needs to be a known procedure.
Like, is, we're, what we have to do by law anyway.
Mm-hmm, right, but this policy, you understand, is only in place for drivers of town vehicles.
I understand, but what he's saying, like, the...
And not just any town vehicle, it's a special town vehicle that you need a special license for.
Correct.
And if, and if a policeman himself is in an accident, I guess there's a whole procedure that's probably not even...
The police aren't going to have that kind of license, I mean...
Oh, it's not a C D L, okay, it's only the C D L guys.
Right, yeah.
But doesn't it say even people who work on the cars and everything else?
It does, but that's... We've talked about that.
Yeah, it really should be anybody with a town vehicle.
I had that conversation already.
I don't, nope.
So for people who are in, who are not C D L...
Yeah.
They would fall under that other drug policy, the one that follows right after the D O T required policy.
Now, there's a few sections that are highlighted, only the section letters, is that just an artifact of some editing?
It is, yeah.
So I kind of agree with you, uh, David, that maybe twenty should precede nineteen, twenty and nineteen should do a dossier, though.
Yeah, right.
Um, and that should go second, because it really feels like a subset of twenty.
But it would be good, so on the second point, my second point, though, would be good, I think, to just include the reference, if I'd missed it, maybe it's in there, to the federals or whatever procedure we're following, it's just...
Okay.
And maybe if, maybe we don't need as much language in here, if in fact, that's already in that policy, in that regulation.
It is, it's right under eight, nineteen dash one A, has the department...
Nineteen dash one A?
In accordance with U S Department of Transportation regulations.
Well, it says regulations, but it doesn't have a specific, okay, so...
Yeah.
So maybe that's just something that has to be attached.
Under nineteen point oh, we could even say more explicitly, this is a, really a subsection to, you know, which it'll now be twenty, it's a subsection to nineteen, which is the townwide thing, and, uh, directed, you know, because it's got that federal law that we have to be following, maybe get some sort of, you know...
So are we, are we actually giving more information here than we need to if it's already covered in those D O T regs?
You are required to give this degree of information to your drivers.
And you say every, you call everybody in this a driver, but going again back to nineteen one, people who unload vehicles, people who repair vehicles, people who give receipts about vehicles, I mean, it's a lot of people, and they don't have C D Ls, right?
No, but, yeah, the, the federal regulations include them as safety-sensitive positions.
Right.
That's, that's how this gets covered.
Regardless of whether the employee operates the vehicle.
So I'm, uh, not, I don't have my C D L, I work for the town, I help load stuff, I don't know, whatever, if that's a thing, but, and then I get in my own car and I have an accident, but it's only if it's involving the town vehicle at that time.
So if there's an accident with the town vehicle, the person who loads it has to get blood tested?
Well, no, you're not going to have a suspicion that that person is on drugs or alcohol.
No, but if it has an accident because the brakes failed...
If the brakes fail, then you go back to the guy who did the break.
Yeah, right.
Right, and that, he doesn't have to be a Chelmsford employee, right? I mean, anybody who works on a, they go to...
Carlo.
Carlo, sorry.
He's at the onboard meeting.
At Chelmsford, I work in Chelmsford, so that's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
There's no repair station here, I go to my pal, I won't say his name, but he's a friend of mine, at, uh, Expert Auto Town in Chelmsford to get my repair done, on a town vehicle, that guy's now subject to this, right?
Yeah, he could be, although I wouldn't think you're just going to go to your friend down the street for repairing a town vehicle.
No, no, but that may be whoever's contracted.
Yeah, whoever's contracted, yes.
They know they're, they're subject to this, right?
All right, do you think we might be able to move on here?
Yeah, but it, I mean, it really boils down to liability, right? If somebody's loading a truck and falls off the back and they're drunk, right, and so they can't sue the town.
Right, it is probably that.
That's that.
Well, and the last, but you also don't want to get hit by the federal government for violations of OSHA regs or D O T regs or...
Falls out of the...
It's more important that if they, yeah, if it flies off the back of the truck because it wasn't loaded properly.
Okay, so we got it, we got it, I think we're over the line.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, we're gonna...
I do need to finish...
Okay, see if we can do this quickly, because we do need to move on.
So one of the things is, um, did you finish up, uh, follow up with, um, Mativier about whether he would, uh, accept becoming the A D A coordinator for the purposes of the policy?
The, the backup coordinator?
Yes, um, building commission...
I'd be the A D A coordinator, that's part of my job.
I, I thought that's what we had decided, that Tim was going to be the A D A.
Yeah, but we wanted a second person, I thought. Well, because you said that you thought John would, would be the one, because he knows about building codes and matters that require action.
Well, he's on the A D A task force, yeah, and he, he does know building codes, and if we needed a backup, I think, I think that's what we were talking about.
Yeah, it says we-
Yeah, backup.
I know we need a backup, so the question was, did you ask him if he would accept being-
He's John's willing.
Okay, so, we have a backup.
And what's his name? John?
John Mativier, because it has to be named in the policy.
Okay. Really? You name a person in a policy?
Yes.
So, every time that person changes, you have to change a policy?
Yes, we do. It's because then, because the employees have to be able to look in this book.
Mm-hmm.
It should be in their hip pocket or wherever, so that they, if they need that information, they can get it right there.
Can the name people be in appendix that we can just change?
Sure, yeah, I'll have to do it that way. Um, so, I, okay, and then, uh, we got the three, we've decided on the three substantive use things.
Yeah.
Um, and then I did ask Tim for information on the cost of the LTD and STD policies because we were talking about the bank. And he told me that they, we offer both, hundred percent voluntary, that, um, the employee pays it. And, um, so that was the answer to that question. All right.
Okay, so we are, um, we have concluded this with the exception of the sick leave bank, which we are gonna hold out for now.
What do, excuse me, what do we need to know now in order to make that decision? Because I want to keep it on my list, so I know, you know, so we keep, I keep the information full.
Not, not to prolong this at all, Barney, but I would just say, you know, it's, it's an add. And I just think that we should be careful about that add because, um, kind of no good deed goes unpunished. And I, and I worry that it could cause us problems.
Yep.
Um, in the future, so I, I, I worry about adding that section.
Right, so I'm saying-
It's administrative cost and then, anyway.
So, what I thought I heard earlier was that we want to hold off on including that in our personnel policies
Okay.
at the moment.
All right.
And that we, um, I, I would suggest that maybe you, you look at it and see if you can figure out what it is, what else do we want to know?
All right.
To, to decide one way or the other, whether we want to-
So, is that the only thing that we're holding off on? So, can we adopt the personnel policy without that? And add it later if we decide we want to add it? Because this way, if we've done, and if we never go back and add it, we have a personnel policy in place in the meantime, which we don't have right now.
Are people comfortable with that?
I am.
Yep, I am.
Okay, so let's have a motion, please, to adopt these personnel policies. Um, as we've, um, reviewed them tonight, revised them tonight, uh, with the exception of, uh, I've forgotten which section it is, but the sick-
Twenty-four dash eight.
Uh, leaving out section twenty-four dash eight, the sick leave bank.
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion?
Well, I would have liked to have added then, I want to make sure that we've got what we did decide. And that was that we were adding the Juneteenth holiday. We're not, um-
And leaving the day after Thanksgiving?
Leaving the day after Thanksgiving.
Correct.
And then, um-
And we're leaving the three days.
Leaving the three substance abuse professional visits.
Yeah.
And, um, we are not, uh, and we're leaving the military leave as it was, uh, subject to maybe revisiting that as well, whether we want to take it to town meeting to adopt the other thing. So, but we're leaving otherwise.
And we're leaving the Friday before, or the Fri- the-
Friday.
The Friday holiday.
Friday after Thanksgiving.
Falls on a Saturday.
Yeah, you're leaving the Friday.
Saturday, we're leaving it-
And we're leaving that.
In Carlisle, you take the Friday before off.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay, I just wanted to enumerate all that.
All right, any other comments? All right, this is a massive undertaking. Well done. Uh, let's, uh, all those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Excellent. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Kate and Donna. Donna, really appreciate all the effort on this. This is one of those, such, you know, detail oriented. So, it's great to have it, uh, really be done here.
I'll be in touch with Tim on follow-up.
Great.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks a lot, Donna.
Night, everyone.
Good night.
Um, all righty, we are at eight forty-five PM. We have our goal-setting continuation. Uh, and Mark has been waiting very patiently. We have the appointments to do, and we have the town administrators' report. And there's several items under that. Let's, yeah, let's charge ahead and see if we can, on the goal-setting, um, it is now eight forty-five. So, um, I would suggest we try to give that thirty minutes. Um, maybe a little bit more, uh, but then we need to allow time, um, for these other items. So, if that makes sense to people, let's see if we can, you know, go to nine fifteen, nine twenty on our goals. And if we need to continue, we will. If that's acceptable, everybody, let's dive in. Um, let's see, what is in here? Um, is this the last iteration that Nathan, you and Mark worked on? Um, a wording, right? Hi, Mark. Yeah, thank you again.
Thank you.
Um, for being here. I'm just trying to get to that part of our agenda.
So, it's a two pager that was sent to you probably, what, two weeks ago?
Yeah.
Much easier to find rather than having to.
All right, goal-setting, here we go. So, what's in our packet? Outlined, um-
And so, just to be clear, this, you know, I think the primary thing that Mark and I were working on were those long-term goals. And we put in short-term goals based upon what we heard was said, but we really haven't talked a lot about the short-term ones.
Okay. So, what we're looking at here where it says financial sustainability, um, the, right, so the first line is the long-term.
Yeah.
Ensure Carlisle's long-term affordability for diversity of households. And then the short-term are things that you and Mark, you and Nathan- Put some pieces out there based on what we talked about. Okay.
This current fiscal year.
Yep, okay, great. Thank you for doing that. Um, so, Mark, what are your thoughts about how you want to tackle this?
I think the easiest thing is simply to get initially agreement on the long-term, if it's written correctly.
Okay.
Attempt not to go into wordsmithing. But basically, are the five of you in agreement with what the long-term goal means in terms of commitment beyond this year? Think of it this way, are we, are you all committed for the next three to five years to ensure Carlisle's long-term affordability for diversity of households? Even if you want to add a few words, that's fine. But if there's agreement on the overall, that's the important thing. And then we can spend some time on deciding what efforts do you want to put into short-term for this year? Then move on to the next one and do the same thing.
Any comments about the long-term sentence?
We're just talking on the one, financial sustainability.
Yeah, just-
We're going step by, I mean, topic by topic.
Long-term sentence there, and then we'll dig into the short-term.
I mean, it's got, you know, qualitative words, I mean, not defined, which is probably a good thing, but the word affordability doesn't really have any context and-
Nor does diversity.
Nor does diversity, which is okay, I guess. I mean, I think as a, as a statement, it's good. I might remind some people of that when we cover an issue in a few weeks, but, uh, I'm okay with it.
Anybody else comment on that, um, that long-term goal, the first one? Uh, Luke, I know you have something you want to say. All right.
Not a long as Benson's, I've eaten a Delta cookie, Delta hairlines.
Did you hear Delta, the chairman of Delta was telling his, um, staff about precautions about the virus and he used the word H one B N four, blah, blah, blah. He wouldn't say the Delta variant, of course.
Yeah.
Understand, right?
Right. Doesn't like that connection, yeah. Um, Kate, you good with this sentence?
I'm good with it.
Okay, and Nathan? Okay, so why don't we dig into the short term?
Good with all of them.
Yeah, well, and I-
Okay, good.
I'm particularly anxious to talk about this one in the short term because we're gonna meet with the FinCom next meeting. And I would love to be able to discuss this with them because
Yes.
we're gonna be pushing this probably their way, so.
Right. So, short-term, uh, Nathan, do you want to say something on this?
Sure, I mean, so the first short-term one was, um, actually one that I had stated. It, it's just, you know, taking a look at what potential growth is in town, like, you know, what are the billable lots? What are, what is the potential for revenue growth for the town over the next five to ten years? And then take a look at, this is probably something we want John, John Palindines help with, but take, take a look at, you know, the, the expenses that we, you know, how we expect the expenses to grow over those five to ten years, and then address those gaps. I mean, that, that's the reality. Um, and anything else that we add in from project bases or adding new holidays, things like that, all count against that. And it just, it, it doesn't mean we're not gonna do things, but at least we're doing it with a context of what the impact is on our budget.
Purpose is an informed citizenry, basically.
And, and informed select board.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, good point. It, it results in better decision-making.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Because we just made a decision, and we don't know what the impact really is at the long-term.
Right.
I'm sure I totally agree with number two.
Yeah, so tell us the thinking on number two.
Well, that's, so this is something that actually, you know, when I first started on the board, um, first couple of years, FinCom would come in and say, okay, so what are our targets? You know, do, do you have a target for where you want to see, um, you know, the, the budget go up? Do you have a target for where you want to see different things? Because then that, that was the context within which they were having the discussions with people. We haven't done that. I, I don't know if we did it last year, but we hadn't done it the last couple of years. Um, and so I think that having, i- if you do number one, right, then we can actually have, we can actually have a plan for, you know, what we'd like is, uh, you know, a two percent increase this year, and maybe a one point nine percent, you know, like, you know, we can kind of map out where we think it is. Again, it doesn't mean that we're stuck with that. But it means that we need to, we need to critique ourselves as to, if we're letting it go above that or below that, you, it, it gives us the context to know that.
What are the implications?
Right, and it gives the, the, it gives FinCom kind of the guide as to, you know, what they should be accepting or not. Because those increases should be coming from us. The, the priorities from the town should be coming from the select board.
Correct.
Not, not from the FinCom.
Right.
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 A good discussion.
So, well, I guess what I'm concerned about is that I don't see us at the end of the year saying, next year, we're gonna have, you know, and for the next five years, you know, we're gonna have one point nine, and then two point three, and four point six, and then one point two, you know? So, that's what I'm concerned about.
We can't possibly do it unless we do number one.
Well, right, okay. A, we have, but there, there's a piece of information that's missing here. And that, um, is, for instance, uh, some of the big projects that, like, building projects and stuff. Because there's just the day-to-day government which is going to go, you know, there's inflation, um, there's, you know,
Coal.
Coal and stuff like that, and, but then there's other things, so I'd like to be able to-
What those other projects are, and, you know, we, we should know. I mean, you know, like municipal facilities, we're supposed to come up with a ten-year plan, right?
So, but I want that, I guess we need that.
That's the cost. Right, that, that's, that, that's the expenses, growth.
Expense part.
That's the expenses part. Is it gonna be perfect? No, it's not, it's not meant to be perfect.
Best estimate.
Yeah, it's an estimate that kind of sets a guideline.
I was focused on the growth in here, and I missed the cost.
And there was a whole thing when the school project was going on, I mean, I don't know whoever sat, if everybody sat through those meetings or not. But that was very detailed. It was laid out. It was, this is what, you know, this is what it's gonna look like for the entire time we're paying off the school. This is when certain things come off the books. You know, and, and, I mean, it was very well done.
Dead capacity, you need to-
Yeah, right, the, all the debt, right, all the debt.
Because you know it all.
Right, but see, we don't, on, on an annual basis, we don't really see that, you know what I mean? So, it could eventually-
Do it every year.
This is gonna force us to do that.
Right, this will force us to know it.
That's the point.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. And then we can plan better, right, if we do want to say increase, increase health insurance benefits. We can say, okay, well, we'll do this, and then maybe do a larger jump here.
But you have a larger thing. I mean, you know that perhaps two and a half caps the increase if you're at the levy limit, two and a half percent, right? You know that slope. We happen to be well under the levy limit, so I guess we can afford a greater up slope.
Exactly.
We could, but once we have, I mean, I agree, two follows one. I think, to not get too prescriptive in two, I would say if we overlay the one onto where we know we are in terms of being under the levy limit, and the levy limit itself growing at two and a half percent a year, I think we can kind of see how that curve fits, and we can make a statement that, you know, we will not, we will endeavor, five to ten years or whatever the timeframe is, we will forego, we will endeavor to forego any, um, overriding type situation. I mean, we can fit inside an envelope. I don't-
But it's probably too early to decide that, before you, before you do one.
Yeah, no, we have to do one. There's no question, we have to do one.
Do one to do two. I'm just saying, when you have your model of one, to both Nathan and Luke's point, you should know what the slope of the expenses, including capital expenses, should look like. Overlay that onto the chart that you already do know, which is where are we relative to levy limit, and levy limit was two and a half percent a year.
Mm-hmm.
And just see what that looks like, and see if it fits.
Yeah, okay.
And then you can decide if you want to be more aggressive than that, but at least you want to do that. You want to say we won't, we won't exceed our, we'll not want to exceed our levy limit. So, I'm okay with it.
Ready to go second one?
Yeah.
Environmental sustainability. So, the key commitment there, as you can read it, is that all future decisions will include or should include a description of the environmental impact, whether beneficial or negative. So, that every decision made by this board moving forward will look at that, and not, ooh, we forgot to talk about it.
Yeah, and it's a policy, so it should be something that every department is considering.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. We want to make sure it's not just the select board.
Yeah, that's the short-term one. It says create a town-wide policy.
Well, you could then require that those decisions that come to us have to-
Have been vetted.
Have done that review.
Done that.
Right, so they don't come to your approval before they have already included that.
Right.
Guess the only thing, is there any reason why we would have to ask town council if we could do this? I can't think of a reason why we can't.
Seems reasonable.
Okay.
Um, I, you know, I also wonder under this one, this is a, this is, um, you know, saying we're gonna have a policy that requires every, you know, board or staff um, to consider the environmental impact of something they want to do. Fine, but it doesn't say anything about, and it, and it says, and then that needs to be, you know, provided to whoever is making the final decision about whether to go ahead with something. But it, there, there's not a, um, a statement here that says we want to-
Like the carbon neutral.
Yeah, or reduce our carbon footprint, or that, a more, um, proactive, let's reduce the impact we have on the climate to the degree that we can within our own community. You know, and that could be everything from, I, I'm not talking about putting these kind of details in here, but it's things like, you know, rebuilding the energy task force and providing, uh, support for them to, you know, be able to apply for grants, and it's, um,
Maybe that's a short-term thing. Maybe that's one of our short-term things.
Yeah, but I think, I think, you know, we, we talked about, and I, and I totally agree that, you know, we could put something like that in there. But what we need to do is make it measurable. And so, like, saying we're gonna reduce the greenhouse, how do we, how do we measure that? What, what's the, what's the current number, and what are we going to, or else it's not a smart goal.
Yeah, and what I think people would tell you that are in that field is it's very hard to, to measure emissions. You can't, you know, it's, it's just very hard, so- But what you, what you could set are different goals that would be measurable. And, and that's the thing, I mean, how much detail do you want to get into? But for instance, you want to, um, right now, you know, eight percent of the people, of houses in town have solar or have, you know, heat pumps, that we would like to promote, you know, we would like to increase that.
But how do you do that? So, Joe, I mean, I understand, but I don't know how you do it.
I don't, I-
Joe homeowner comes to, you know, Mativier or whatever, and says, I want to, you know, put an extension on.
Yeah.
Say, well, what's the environmental impact? Did you consider solar panels? He goes, well, they're too expensive, too many trees. Done. I mean, you can't say, well, you have to go back with a plan that you, we can't force them to-
For instance, we could do something around, um, incentives.
I think we could do it.
Yeah, right, so we could.
What if we have a short-term goal of identifying those things that we can do and that are measurable?
Right.
Yeah, A, or I like your goal-
Implemented, you know.
Yeah, I like your thing, rebuild the energy task force. I mean, that's, that's a, that's a, did you do it or didn't you? Yeah, you know?
Yeah.
And, and we, then we can ask them to do what you just said, because I don't see us doing it.
We could require that town decisions, not decisions of people, you know, residents of the town. But town decisions are made, you know, like the one that was in town meeting. Fisher wants another cruiser, and we could require that those things that have a negative environmental impact, that a lower impact alternative be vetted.
Well, we've done that.
We've done that.
We've done that in number one.
In the long-term goal, that's specifically-
And in the sec- and the short-term.
In the short-term.
No, it doesn't say that.
A policy that says that they have to-
Right, we could do a policy.
So, so we've developed a policy that, that says they have to consider it, and we could either approve or not approve based upon the information we're given.
So, in the policy part, I guess, we could.
We could say-
I like the idea of, though, of identifying as a, another short, I, I like both the rebuild the energy task force, or, or maybe we-
I think it's a different name.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, maybe we have a new thing. There was a proposal, anyway.
Sustainability.
Yeah, whatever. Um, but then the other, I like the idea to- But then the other, I like the idea too of designating that, whether it's us or it's some other body, but that one of the goals is to identify specific measurable goals that the, that the town could consider implementing in order to reduce our-
So these are our goals, so I would say that either we're going to put in here that we're going to identify them, or we put in here, we create a committee that we are charging to do these.
To come up with those goals.
I don't have the bandwidth, I don't know about you.
Because these are our goals, so these are things that we would physically be doing.
Right, but we can, the thing we can do is set up that committee. I like that.
The strength of the long-term goal here, the way it's stated, is a clear commitment by this board to consider, to have all decisions in the future be looked at from an environmental standpoint. That's a strong commitment. And then the policy is then going to lay it out for everybody, and I'm hearing that you'd like to add launch or revitalize or reinstate a fill the blanks with the name, task force, whatever.
An environmental sustainability-
To identify specific action steps, or something like that.
Committee, to identify-
Specific- What do we say?
I'll just, I'll put it in.
Okay, so number two would be to create an environmental sustainability committee that would be charged with identifying specific, measurable-
Action steps.
Sorry?
Action steps.
Action steps.
To reduce, to reduce
environmental impacts in the town.
Indeed, keep it fairly vague, because otherwise you restrict their ability to dig into.
Right.
Okay, so create an environmental sustainability committee charged with specific measurable action steps.
Right.
I would still like in the-
Charge with create or identifying.
In the long-term, the two sentences below environmental sustainability, the long-term goals, I, maybe I'm nitpicking, but, tell me if I am, but it we're committed to ensuring that the environmental impact is considered. And we want to make sure that people are looking at that and determining whether what they wanna do is beneficial or negative. But we are not saying, and we want, and we we support reducing our carbon footprint, or, you know, we're not, we're not making it a positive. We're just saying you have to look at it through this lens.
Yeah.
And I, I would like us to take a more proactive stance that says we believe that our community can be responsible for, should be responsible for trying to lower our carbon footprint, whatever the language is you wanna use.
Yeah, after having just read an op-ed in the New York Times about carbon footprints and how it's really greenwashing and not really effective, I'm a little leery about using that language now. I'll send it to you, just, just 'cause I thought it was very interesting.
I'm gonna put the end of just say, whether beneficial or negative, comma, and, I'm sorry, towards the end, all future decisions should describe the environmental impact, whether beneficial or negative. And a justification and-
I mean, nine fifteen.
I like that.
Seven minutes. What was that, Nathan?
We've got eight goals to go yet.
So I was just saying, what if we say, towards this end, all future decisions should include environmental impact, a description of the environmental impact, whether beneficial or negative, comma, and if negative, a justification as to why that decision was made.
The only thing is, so to what level are we gonna have this? You know, if somebody wants to change out their light bulbs, are we gonna make them do an environmental impact?
No, no, we're talking, we can't control those things.
No, exactly, but-
This has to be what happens in the town.
You probably should say all-town projects.
Well, this is for all projects.
Right, I think, I think we should say all-town projects.
All-town projects.
Town projects and purchases, right? Because there are other things like vehicles, right?
I like that, all-town projects and purchases.
So why, but, but we really should have, in a sense, a limit, and we don't necessarily need to have it in our goal, but at least something that we're gonna tell folks, you know, any purchase that's over five thousand dollars.
That'll be in the policy.
That would be in the policy.
That would be in the policy.
But we do have to think about that at that point, because-
I agree.
And there are gonna be times where we'll make the decision to go with maybe the less one, because it's an old building, the more efficient one is heavier, and it's gonna, you know, you know.
Well, there'll be laps of those. There'll be, there'll be Chief Fisher's, you know, car we said. But like, Gary Davis comes back, we gotta pay Joe Blow road. And he said, well, have you considered the special low toxicity asphalt? And we're like, yeah, it costs three times as much. I mean, I wanna be careful, 'cause we'll begin to get caught up in our own hypocrisy.
Right. Yeah, that's what I'm concerned about.
But at least, at least we'll have considered it. I don't want it just because it's only cheaper, or, or we didn't, or worse yet, we never even considered the alternative, it's just 'cause we've always-
We can't get too prescriptive in the goal.
Right.
So maybe add those words, town projects and purchases.
Right.
I have that in there.
Barney's point, at the end of the thing. And if, if negative, a review of alternatives or something.
Well, what if it says, you know, whether beneficial or negative, and then, comma, with a goal of promoting beneficial decisions wherever possible, or something. Or with a goal of supporting beneficial
Alternatives.
Outcome.
Outcomes, yeah.
We're gonna try to lead by example.
Yes.
Okay, because we cannot mandate those things for our town residents, and we cannot set rules for the town.
Town projects.
That's right.
You're taking a state, you're making a statement, and that's important at this point, then the nuts and bolts will be in the policy.
Right.
And so we have, the select board is committed to ensuring the environmental impact is considered for all-town projects and purchases. Towards the end, all future decisions should include a description of the environmental impact, whether beneficial or negative, with the goal of promoting beneficial outcomes.
Yes.
I'm good with that.
And we're gonna create a town-wide policy, and then we're also gonna-
And then create an environmental sustainability committee charged with specific measurable action steps.
Great. All right, citizen engagement.
There we go.
Every time I read this, an enraged and informed community makes it stronger.
That too.
You're scarred.
That helps also.
Sorry, I'll put my glasses on and read that again. Hey, we will work to increase interest in town government by ensuring all committees are well-structured and supported by the select board, and increasing citizens' general involvement in town affairs.
Small little thing, should be probably citizens' apostrophe.
Yes.
Apostrophe yes.
So is it two things we're doing? We will work to increase interest in town government by colon, ensuring all committees are blah, 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 and by increasing citizens' general involvement? Is it two different things?
About three things. Ensuring the committees are well-structured, that they are supported by the select board.
So it might be worthwhile, the separate amount of those.
Well, well-structured and supportive, but I think it's two things. We wanna make sure the committees are structured and supported, and we wanna increase citizens.
Can I add in there, they're well they're well structured, staffed, and supported? We wanna make sure we have the right people on committees.
How are we gonna do that?
Yeah, that's true, too. But when I say staffed, I worry about-
You gotta pause, you're interested in, I don't know how you do that.
Paid staff?
No, 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 I'm just, I'm just saying, I don't know how, what, what other word to use.
Staff isn't the word, then.
Yeah, I think supported, I think supported connotes, I would try to give them the right resources, I don't.
Well, no, you mean, you don't mean paid staff to help them. You mean the volunteers on the committee, our constructive volunteers, yeah.
The right people in the right seats on the bus.
Isn't that part of our support? I mean, the ones that work for us, anyway.
So far, the only change is, there's two, there's a colon after by, and there's a-
A apostrophe. One and a two, yeah. Okay, short-term.
I, I would suggest, you don't need the colon, you can just say ensuring. The comma after select board will do the trick.
The Oxford comma.
All right, the select board will meet every committee at least twice per year to ensure alignment and-
Are we really gonna meet with every committee twice a year, or every major committee, or?
Well, that's, I think maybe we have too many committees.
Well, that's a whole nother thing.
Some of them, I think.
We thought we had a one tonight.
We did, and I mean, that was good. Well, we didn't really, yeah, okay. But, and we have some that we've lost through attrition, because, you know.
Yeah, we'd look at it, this year is one, once. And the next year, try two, in other words. Even though you put it down as two, the reality is, this year, you're probably going to get the more you get into the habit of meeting with them, you make it, okay, it's mandatory, we're gonna do it financed this time and that time, and so forth, and just part of the schedule.
Yeah, okay, so we could, we say the select board will meet with every committee at least once. And at least once does not preclude twice. So some will be once, and some will be twice. Some don't need to be twice, possibly. Some of them we have never met with, and how many, when was the agriculture committee met with us last?
Could it be a, sort of a, you know, the option, I, I, that maybe it's, we don't ask the personnel board to come before the select board, right? To, to meet with us, maybe it's a couple of us attend a personnel board meeting. Or we all go.
We just have a joint meeting with them on their time.
But that's, but that's still meeting with us. We will meet with them. Doesn't say that they have to come here.
Okay.
The point is, you only get engagement if people are engaging with, and that's, you all identify that as a need.
As well, you know, we'll say, what are you do, what are you doing? What are the big things that you see coming on the horizon?
Priorities.
What do you, you have questions to ask us? What do you, you know?
So we're changing it to once?
At least once, because when you say at least once, that means at least once. But it does not preclude twice. And many of these, as I said, we have not met with at all for many, many years.
All right, then, the next one, committee charters, charter and team review, and the team means who's on it?
Yeah, and, and do we need this? Is a committee charter written correctly for, 'cause a lot of these things have evolved over the years, too. And, and then I think the other, maybe, could we add to that number two, whether we still need this committee or not? Or maybe reformation, or, you know, possible, you know, maybe we could collapse a couple of other committees. We had the, you know, this, today, the celebrations of veterans folded, and maybe there's some others that we could collapse, one into one, into the other, that would make some sense. And, you know, look, we-
You're talking realignment, what are you talking about?
Yeah, realignment, or, yeah.
A review, team review and adjustment.
We're gonna, you know, that we're justifying the committee, or is that just part of looking at the charter?
I don't think that's part of look, how you look at it, is you have the freedom to decide what you want to do with it, no?
You know, if that committee is not moving our goals forward, we don't need, we don't need that committee, it's their burden.
Process, yeah. I mean, hopefully, you know, I think, yeah, we've got a lot of committees, and so I think we're spreading our few volunteers out.
Yeah, I agree, totally agree.
So I think that's implied in reviewing the charter.
Right, yeah, I think so, too.
And the other thing that's implied in there is, 'cause we're looking at the whole charter, right? So the other thing that's implied in there is, is that the number of people on the committee correct? Is the term correct? Are they staggered? That's all in reviewing the charter.
Is the rotation in office.
And then, and then do we have the right people?
Right, 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 right.
Which we should be looking at every year when we're doing appointments.
Reappointments, right. What's the, so open forums, booths, these are just various community events where we have the opportunity to engage.
Right, and this was just thrown in there, not as actually as a short-term goal, but just to spur a conversation as to should we be doing events, like at Old Home Day, like have a booth or something like that, where we're just talking about all the committees that we have? You know, it's like, you know, I was at an event on Saturday, and I was, you know, I was really pressuring somebody across the table and his wife to get more involved.
Unity.
So, but this is not worded as a goal.
Well, it's a short-term, I, well, okay.
And then the other thing was marked throughout, is, is a measure of committee involvement, of citizen involvement, is, is that voter participation, is that a measure? And so do we wanna set something aloud? Getting, getting more voter participation, is that a measure of citizen involvement?
It's a modest, pretty modest measure.
It's a, it's a long-term goal, but if you can, if you say you have currently ten percent on a non-presidential election, and you can move it to fifteen percent, that's a fifty percent increase of more people engaged. And that's how you measure whether you're getting there.
That's a metric, right?
It's a metric, yeah.
Yeah, but it's not ex-
I don't know, I mean-
It's not, let's say, a goal.
Yeah, not necessarily.
Well, you could make it a goal.
You could make it a goal to increase.
We wanna get to fifteen percent.
It's a trailing indicator, they call it.
But really, you want more people to either run or volunteer, right? Isn't that really what we want?
Well, I think there's two different concepts here. One is getting more people involved in committees and-
Your open forums and booths and stuff.
And then the other is getting more people involved in voting for those important issues that are coming up off of, off of presidential election cycles. We don't have to have them, we just put them in here to make sure that we remember to talk about them.
Right, yep. Okay?
So should we have open forums and booths and things like that? Or should we not do that in this year's short-term goals?
It's a time, I mean, a booth, I guess so, but I, I don't know.
Maybe we should just, for this year, I mean, I know it may fall in the next fiscal year, depending on how they do things, but what if we just said for this year, a goal would be to
Identify forums and booths that might-
Or I'm just gonna say, have a booth at Old Home Day, you know, next year, and then, uh-
Isn't there another Old Home Day in October?
They've canceled it.
Oh, they do?
Yeah, yeah.
But we're having one this fiscal year.
Right, we will have one next June, I would think.
Is there any other place?
But then also our town meeting, our spring town meeting, that we wanna-
Looks like maybe a fall town meeting.
Yeah, possibly.
Yeah, so we could have, we could have a table with, you know, brochures about involvement in different, or different committees.
And I also think that our questionnaire at the back of our town warrant is not in the right spot. It should be a card that is-
Well, it's stale, too, yeah, I agree.
In fact, you know those colored cards they give us to vote with? That should be it, it should be printed, and people then should be encouraged to fill it out and drop it off in a box on their way out the door. It's colorful, you know, they've got time to do it.
Yeah, the other thing with the open forums, though, is getting information out. I mean, we don't really have a lot.
And I don't think we're utilizing social media. I believe what we need to do, I think, again, we have two different things. I think absolutely good housekeeping, meet with committees, make sure they're structured right, they're supported right, they're staffed.
That will go a long way.
That we can do right now. The longer-term one, I think, deserves some more thought. And I, I believe what we should do is what school committee went through a while back with Christine. We should explore the modern era of social, how do you reach people in town? I mean, doing the same old thing again and again, you know, a group always volunteers, and the rest of the group tunes out except once in a while. And we gotta reach them in ways that engage them more. That itself is a project. Before we get prescriptive about a booth or a card, you know, all of which are good to do and we can do, I really think that the benefit would be to think hard about the way they're accessing information. I mean, there's certain restrictions, O M multi-restrictions on what you would say, put in a Facebook page. I don't even know if we have a Facebook page, but that's clearly how a lot of people are getting. Can we put out tweets? Can we do things that will keep what we're working on every day? I mean, how many people have tuned in today?
Vice chair.
Ten?
I got the tweets.
Right, how many people will tune in later? Three? You know, nobody's paying attention, except if there's an issue. 'Cause we're not reaching them in a manner that they're accustomed to getting information. They're not looking at CCTV. It's good time for that. We gotta get something on their phone, so, you know, we need more thought on that. That's the kind of outreach, I think, that we do.
How do we turn what you just said into a goal?
This year, yeah.
We should, this year, no specific goal, other than to consider, you know, methods of outreach.
Okay, so this, instead of open forums, booths, et cetera, it would be consider- Okay, so this, instead of open forums, booths, et cetera, it would be consider, um, methods?
Novel.
Novel?
Well, they're not novel to most people, it's just maybe.
But just, yeah, and, um, explore the use of social media.
Yeah, explore the use of social, explore different, different ways to enhance.
Communication.
Engagement, communication, including social media. And there's some legal issues we have to tackle if we're going to use that, it's a double-edged sword, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So I think I have.
So you're at your time, do you wanna keep going on goals?
Yeah, so here we got nine.
Explore methods of outreach regarding opportunities for involvement in town and to increase participation.
Could you say that again, sorry, I, I.
Explore methods of outreach regarding opportunities for involvement in town and to increase participation.
Yeah, I, I, did everybody hear that? I thought it was good.
Okay. Okay, and we'll get rid of number four?
Number four.
Yep.
Yeah, for now, I think it's, we've got enough on our plate.
Yep.
Well, shall we power, try to power through these last two? Which means going beyond what we talked about, but, so we may have to go.
Let's get it done.
Okay.
Our schools remain strong.
Everybody good with that? All right, so quality of education.
Matrix, shared vision and long-term goals for education.
I think this particular one is verbatim kinda things that were said that night.
Yes.
Basically what was said.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's fine.
I think they're both, they're all fine.
And by the way, Barney, remind me, please, tomorrow that Jack did give me dates, and we should try to finalize it for a separate meeting with the school.
And, uh, so, the short-term ties between town and school, okay. Then number two, work with the school committee, so I'm assuming we're talking about just our local elementary here, not the regional school committee, right?
I think on both.
Yeah, it shouldn't be both.
Yeah, I mean, we should have a little more, yeah, I, I think it should be both, although, really.
We need to know where they're going.
Yeah, we, we do, they, they.
So then change that, where it says school, the school committee to.
With school committees.
Well, parenth, it says K through twelve, so it should say, between town and schools, and then in parenths, CPS and CCHS.
There's two school committees.
And school committees.
Yeah, there's an S at the end of committee covers it, right?
Yes.
So two edits, in item one, schools, parenths, CPS and CCHS, schools, parenths. And then two, just committees.
Ensure our schools, you said?
Schools.
Yeah, but it says K, Q.
Well, it says twelve, but it's two schools, it's actually three schools, technically.
So that's our schools.
So what we're saying, so what I have is work with the school committees to identify a shared vision and long-term goals for education in Carlisle.
And, yes, well, our education of Carlisle students.
Yeah, because it's really not.
It's not education in Carlisle.
Oh, so, I, so you were talking in one to put the two schools, okay, sorry.
Well, in one, I was just, I wanted, I wanted to clarify what we're talking about, both CPS and CCHS.
And, um, I, I think I would also add, because we have a pre-K, make it, the first line, providing exit education pre-K to twelve.
Right, yeah, agreed.
Okay.
I'm sorry, the town and school, CCHS and?
CPS and CCHS. We, we don't, I think it's not enough students in other schools.
Pre there.
Enumerate.
Yep.
Taking edits, Mark will make it English.
Because.
I'm just learning it.
Yeah. Because we're not the native speakers around here. Okay. I mean, I think that's good, this is, you know, listen. This, unfortunately, these are not totally, you know, measurable, strengthening a tie, you know, but, um.
It has to start somewhere, which is.
It has to start, start somewhere, so we're gonna be, we'll make the first. Lip come epa. Okay. Town hall alignment, it's a little cockeyed, I know, but. Maintain and foster a professional work environment by ensuring collaboration between departments, providing a path for advancement and succession planning, yes, boy. And developing a clear understanding of success through establishing goals and evaluating performance. Here, here.
I like it.
I do, too, I think that's a great goal.
Great.
Implement annual goal setting, the performance review process at all levels, meet with all staff on a quarterly basis.
And this is the select board.
No, this is us.
This is the select board to meet with all staff.
Basically, it's an open forum, they don't have to come.
Quarterly.
But we're just making ourselves available, anybody?
Okay, 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 so it's.
So might wanna clarify that a little bit, or expand on it just a tad.
We're the ones that are doing the performance review in quarterly or something, because we've just been finished talking about all that stuff.
To invite all staff on a quarterly basis to.
That's pretty aggressive, quarterly basis. Is that seeing all the staff together, or seeing?
All, all the staff together, it's just four times a year, we make ourselves available here during the day if anybody has any questions, or.
Okay.
Just to hear their, get their input and things like that.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's maybe a one-hour session.
So what is staff, just town hall staff?
Anybody?
No, it could be open to any, any staff, yeah.
Anybody who wants to come.
Well, it says, the goal says town hall alignment, I'm just asking.
Okay, that's a good point.
Okay, so.
Is it, is it Carlisle employee alignment, or?
So meet with all town staff?
Well, meet with any town, um, become, be available.
Make available.
To me.
Quarterly basis.
I think David's got a good point, maybe the, the, the topic of this goal is not town hall alignment, maybe it's town staff alignment.
Uh-huh.
Town staff alignment, and then some of the meetings might be at the fire station, maybe, or at the police station, or.
Yeah, sit in a cell together.
Four different places, I think that would be a great, great thing to do.
School.
I'm getting out of that one.
Well, we're putting you there on the police station, you have to sit there for three shifts.
No, I, I really like, under the short term, the create mechanism for celebrating excellence, and I'm wondering, were you thinking that one thing we ought to have as a concrete goal, which we have talked about, is the exploration of merit pay?
Or bonuses.
Or bonuses, but do we wanna?
Merit pay you're stuck with, bonuses you're not.
Right, but I mean, just to look at that.
Yeah.
Do we wanna make it more concrete there?
No, I don't think so, I think, because it could just be an award, it could be.
Yeah.
Whatever we decide.
I just.
We could have a parking space.
We had said before that when we, um, that we're gonna do a salary review, um.
Yes.
And that we wanted to, when we had the whole conversation about, um, was it the, what, was it the COLA, what was the? Anyway, we, I think it's maybe before you came on the board, Nathan, we had a, we had a couple of different conversations about wanting to look at merit pay. Doing, trying to do that between now and fiscal twenty-three, so that if we wanted to implement something like that, as opposed to just taking, um, you know, everybody gets the same flat percentage increase. That we would, we would have done the homework to be able to do that.
Yeah, so what I, what I would worry about putting that in here is we may be setting expectation that merit pay is something that's gonna be there. Whereas it could be at the end, we decide, no, what we're gonna do is we're gonna do a bonus, or, certainly it should be something that we're considering.
Right.
But do we wanna put it in black and white, white?
The wording is vague enough that it allows you to go there to the bonus or whatever you choose, but it, it doesn't restrict you to.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we do that, though.
Wanted to be more equitable as well, because we thought, you know, the person might, who's being paid very low wage, if you're doing a two percent across the board, gets two percent of nothing. Whereas, you know, and they might have been doing an outstanding job, and we wanted a mechanism to.
Pay them more, and have someone else, right.
And, but that had to be done, yeah, okay, you go, you go.
Well, we could put at the end of this in parentheses, we could put, for example, merit pay, bonuses, awards, et cetera.
Yes.
Let's do that.
I'd be careful, please. Once it's in writing.
Yeah.
People are gonna start asking about it. People will see merit pay and bonus, and they'll go, ooh, when they see a word.
That's a good thing, don't we want it?
Oh, no, no, merit pay and bonuses are great. It's not a good thing if you don't end up doing.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, but the point is, it's gonna.
We had this two percent that we've been giving every year, and then we wanted to take it and divide it up differently, that's what we were talking about.
Yeah, 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 I'm not saying we shouldn't cover it, I'm just saying.
Don't put it on the paper.
Let's leave it like this, we know what we're talking about.
Okay, I'm holding us to this.
Thousands of citizens would disagree, but, yeah.
Okay, uh, but I didn't mean to jump ahead. So we have the, the one, two, three goals here, um, yeah, under the short term, are we all comfortable with that?
One, two, and three?
Yeah, wait, I have four.
I'm sorry, we just discussed four, and we hadn't done any.
Well, number two I changed to meet with staff in a group setting on a quarterly basis to better understand how we can support them.
I like that.
Yep, you could put in parenths, uh, rotating venues, or.
Possibly in rotating venues.
We understand that.
Okay.
All right? Done?
Look at that. Nine thirty-three, nine thirty-four, all right.
Should I get rid of barbecue at the end?
No.
Oh, the specific idea, um, yeah, we don't wanna, just, we know what we mean.
Don't promise a barbecue if it ends up being pizza, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Barbecue to name themselves.
Yeah, there you go.
You can do that as long as everybody else be cutting splitwood.
Okay, let's go back and do the appointments, okay?
Okay.
We have three of them. One is the Conservation Restriction Advisory Committee, Lee Tetecheff, I think I'm saying her name right?
Okay, so.
Who is ready to make that?
I moved to appoint Lee Tetecheff, one thirty Oakno Road.
Oh, yeah, sorry, Mark, I should've said more formally, thank you very much, we have really appreciated your help.
We told toys.
Okay, I will start over, move to appoint Lee Tetecheff, one thirty Oakno Road, to serve on the Conservation Restriction Advisory Committee, with a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I moved to appoint Judy, and I probably mispronounced it, Sarcov.
Sarcov.
Sarcov, okay, I put the emphasis on the wrong syllable, three sixty-two River Road, to serve on the Land Stewardship Committee, with a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye. Move to appoint Deborah Bentley, Heald Road, to serve on the Cultural Council, Council, with a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second?
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, excellent, and then let's go back to the Town Administrator's Report, um.
Five minutes, Tim.
We're gonna, well, we're gonna give this more than five minutes, if needed.
There's a lot of things to.
But let's, um, go with the Fall Town Me, Special Town Meeting.
Okay.
Which, uh, may have a little more.
And maybe we got.
We're gonna have to wait on this, I don't know.
Well, the early returns, where we didn't have very many, many articles that have been submitted, there's a developer who's very interested in having his road accepted as a town way before the winter. For some reason, uh, and that, uh, there's the Military Leave Provisions Donna was referring to, again, not a time-sensitive.
Yeah.
Sure thing, and the easement, uh, fire protection easement, uh, we heard earlier tonight about another possible, uh, town meeting. Article, again, I guess you'd have to weigh whether it's, you know, it's some things that can't wait until.
I think only the last one is time-sensitive.
Correct, correct, and, you know, the cost of a town meeting is, you know, about four, five thousand dollars, for one, for, you know, one-nighter.
I'd rather spend it on employee benefits.
Right, right, if, if we were going to have a special town meeting in October, we'd need to know within the next meeting or two.
How late can we have it? Where is Lions Gate, and has, is the planning board considering laying this, laying out the way?
They, uh.
It's been already built, they planned it out.
I don't know exactly where it is, they are considering it, there, there are some drainage issues that CONSCOM is very concerned about, and maintenance of the drainage structure that, uh, the town would take responsibility for, that, so that is not, uh, necessarily a slam dunk at this point.
Has the plan board, is the planning board, has, is it before the planning board?
It, it, it's before them, I don't know what their recommendation would be.
Okay.
Yeah, it's off of West Street.
That's right, West Street, yep.
Yep.
Oh, is that the new one out back there?
Yeah, the, I think it's four lots.
Right, okay.
Yep. Yeah, that was a mess, uh, in terms of citing those four lots, everything's very tight, yeah, water is an issue.
Isn't there, like, normally, a couple of years that goes by, just make sure everything settles down before we accept a road?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
And how long's this been?
Usually, they push.
It's just accepted.
Yeah, so this is just, just completed, right?
And are all the lots built and sold?
I don't think so.
Because that might be, though, Johnson, we required a certain number of them, had to be done before.
Right, yeah, it was some percentage.
Because we worried about damage to the roads and.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, yes, exactly. I think it's not ripe, as they say, for review.
So, but our sense is, if it's just these three items, it doesn't make sense.
Right.
But we need to understand the timing of the last item, so.
We all know for a couple of weeks.
We won't know for a little while.
And we only needed, what, ten days to post it, so we're.
Fourteen days to post it.
Sorry, fourteen.
Realistically, you need three or four weeks to.
I know, but, yeah.
Latest we can go, there's no latest we can go if we have it inside.
Go into early November.
If we're comfortable going inside, which is itself another question, or can one have a virtual, do you have to have some?
No, we can't do a virtual, yeah.
Yeah, we can't, we can't do remote town meetings, only representative town, meeting towns can do that, for some reason, open town meeting can't. So the risk we run, in my opinion, is COVID gets bad, and indoor meetings are discouraged, and we bundle up and we do it in November.
In this, no.
I think, right now, we have to know whether or not there is another topic, because right now.
Right now, there's not enough.
These three topics don't justify.
No, but I'm, I'm thinking, if we don't learn about the fourth topic till two weeks, a month from now, and then we have to push ourselves into a November TM, because that's when it is, then we bundle up and we do it outside. If, a lot of ifs, right? If we can't go inside, and if, da-da-da-da, so.
I think we're gonna know in two weeks, though.
We might, yeah. So, okay, so let's take it up in two weeks.
Okay.
Okay.
Um. Yeah, now the job postings.
Uh, the jobs have been posted, uh, for a little while, we've had four or five applicants for the Assistant Treasurer Collector already, we have had none in response to the IT services. Have we advertised in the mosquito? Uh, no. Because there's a lot of people with IT notes in town, that might. I can do that.
I think what I'd like, what I'd like to chat about, though, is whether or not we should, and I talked about this earlier today with Tim in, in our IT working group meeting. You know, should we sit down with our current consulting company and say, we want a higher level of support, what can you do to give us a higher level of support?
Agreed.
We have this, we have this money that we could use for that, I don't think it would cost anywhere near that, but, you know, just, just see if there's more support we could get in that avenue before hiring somebody.
I think that's a great idea. You can do both those things, right?
Yep.
Yep, you certainly could.
I thought it was a full-time position, and it seems.
That, that was the intention, the Finance Committee funded the seventy-five K.
Nathan's perfectly right, third-party people can.
Grow labor edit.
Not a full-time.
Okay, I, I, fine, that's just.
You don't need, you don't necessarily need.
And no benefits.
Well, yeah, that's true.
I mean, it could be that, you know, they're putting something on site once a week.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
We've gotta have more than what we've got, there's no question, but the thing is, what if we, what if we need a webmaster or something like that, can they do that as well?
Well, this person probably wouldn't do that either.
Right. Yeah, but they, they, right, but they offer even more services, right?
Yeah, I think, right, so then it's, yeah, I agree with that, I think you should, I mean, you've got a job description, and you could, I'm sure Nathan can get more specific with them, or who's the point of contact with the current vendor?
Is it the committee, or is it you two?
Well, Tim is.
Yeah, it's me primarily. All right, so you know what's needed. All right, so you know what's needed.
Yeah.
No, I can ask them for a proposal, I think.
Right. And then for the Assistant Treasurer Collector, you're saying we've gotten four responses?
I think we've gotten four, uh, responses.
Well, I have a question about that one, and, you know, if there's gonna be a reorganization in that department, which I thought there was going to be, why are we hiring, no?
No, we, I'm, I'm agreeing with you, we shouldn't hire until the reorg is done.
Why, why, why aren't we reorganizing first, I don't.
She wants to ask for, she's, she wasn't ready tonight, but Kim wants to ask for the additional five hours to make it a full-time position, so.
But I wanna know, what is that organization gonna look like?
Yeah, I'd find out.
Are there gonna be any other?
Is the increase in work?
Well, that's what I went over with her, that we needed, that what, that we needed much more detail than what she provided.
And she's gonna provide that next, next time?
And so she says, yeah.
Yeah, for fourteen, that's with, with FinCom in attendance, right?
Correct.
That would be great.
That'll be better, right, okay.
I think she has more work than she can do, because she's not getting to the things she really needs to do, like the policy part. But I wanna have it laid out in some cogent way, and, and are there gonna be reorganizations in, in functions among?
Can we just add hours to that person, like, two years ago?
Um.
Created that position two years ago.
Yeah, we created the position two years ago.
Assistant Treasurer.
And now, now they need more hours.
Created, yeah.
Yeah, but it's again, you know, she wasn't really qualified and didn't have enough.
Well, that's a completely different problem.
Well, that's, well, that's part of our problems, it's the same problem we've got in the Board of Health. Increase the hours, change the job description, but the person isn't up to speed, and so, is not up to speed, and so then, the stuff is still not getting done. So we need to have.
Right, I think, yeah.
And I, so I don't wanna recreate the same situation we had.
So, are we, um, it sounds like we're all in agreement that the, um, the process, we, we can certainly accept, and we can take whatever comes along in terms of applications to the current posting, but that shouldn't move forward on any, any decision on that until we have this, have a presentation, and we, as a select board, have voted one way or the other on the, on the posting, on the position.
Yeah, because it's also not fair to the person coming in, you know, hey, welcome, we're gonna reorganize you.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, so then, uh, let's go to number three, then, Tim, the historic district map.
Number three, uh, the historic district map update project's complete, and I've attached the, uh, work that the consultant did for the, uh, Historical Commission, and it's on the website now, I, I think it was a much-needed update, and, uh.
So were there houses added, or just more detailed on the ones?
I think, I think it was mostly the same properties in the district, but, uh.
Added the architect.
I mean, some of these. Some details added.
And, and now that they're in there, is there certain restrictions on what they can do?
Some of them are not at all historic.
I don't think they changed the restrictions at all, but, no, were, houses, lots were added, it doesn't look to me like anything was added, was it? I'm not, I'm not really aware, but.
This one was done in nineteen eighty.
I guess they, they probably couldn't change the historic district without, like, going to town meeting or something, would be my guess.
If you have a house in historic district, whether it's historic itself or not, it is a house, and, which means you can't do certain things.
That's right, you have to ask for paint color changes, or roofs, and anything externally visible you have to ask about, unless it's landscaping, like, uh, trees.
Um, actually, uh, we should, this is one thing I think maybe we should revisit, though, or, or review. There, there is a section in their rules saying that if you can see the television from, you know, outside and stuff like that, which I think is a step too far.
Is there? I thought it was only external.
Isn't that, that one, as you drive in from West Street?
There were some things that if you could see into the house, and, you know, I like to remind people that the people that built these houses, whenever any technological advances, like the Frankenstein came around, you know, if they could afford it, they'd put it in.
Okay, let's, in the interest of moving along here, um, before we go to the agenda for the next meeting, though, um, Tim, um.
Yeah, I've got a couple of items, so.
Yeah.
Uh, first of all, I think, uh, did everyone get a copy of the proposed letter to, to Department of Public Utilities, regarding ever source that, that Bob Zog had drafted?
Yeah. I'm not favoring sending that.
Generally unfavorable, favorable.
Yeah, people favorable to sending that, uh, follow-up letter?
Yeah.
Excellent, yeah, we should, I can't, I can't believe they're still dragging that lead.
I can't believe we're still not.
Do we need a vote to do that, Tim?
You can just direct me to do that.
All right, please do, so directed.
Yeah. All right, I'll prepare that for the.
Okay.
Chair's signature. Also, earlier today, I circulated, uh, a proposed intermunicipal agreement for public health services, uh.
Yeah.
For, uh.
Sounds good.
Yep, the surrounding towns, current laws included, would fund additional hours for a public health nurse, or a registered sanitarian, or just, uh, really whatever the district determines are the, uh, public health needs, and, uh.
Is there a cost associated with that?
It's, uh, I think it's a grant, I don't think.
It's a grant, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we had heard about this a while ago.
Yeah, 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 Linda, I, I should've mentioned when she was here earlier, she was hoping the board could sign off on that tonight, because they, they've got a bit of a deadline, so I have one original here, if the board would, if you'd vote that and sign it, that'd be great.
Okay.
Oh boy, only one original?
Well, that's all we could spare.
Budget cuts, yeah.
And another, I, I should've mentioned this, when the Board of Health was here.
Get it all the way on holidays.
The chief was here as well, there was some discussion at the LSTC level, uh, the Board of Health essentially recommending that, uh, boards go back to remote meetings, uh.
Zoom meetings?
Zoom meetings.
In total?
Uh, I mean, not, you know, not meeting in person.
Go back, what do you mean, only, only in Zoom, or?
That's what, not, uh, yeah, so you wouldn't meet here in person, we'd go back to what we did.
All Zoom.
Yeah.
All Zoom, and who's recommending, who's asking for that?
First period of time, the Board of Health, yeah, I guess I have to agree.
And LAPC said we should.
I guess, I don't agree.
Consider that.
I mean, uh, because if we're, if we're saying kids are going to school, and teachers are going to school, why, why are we not?
Well, you know what, we should.
Yeah, I just think it's better interaction in person.
Yeah, it's, it's a heck of a lot more effective.
But they're, they're going to school, what, three to six feet apart, or no? Are they also, are they socially?
They're trying to do three feet, but it's, it's tricky.
Yeah, but let's not call me, I mean, I think we had a discussion on that at the task force we had last Monday, and Jack Huntress is in agreement with you, Nathan, for schools, and I can see it, the school board is overseeing schools, it would be disingenuous for them not to meet in person, but I think the Board of Health is saying, you know, take prudent risks where you need to take prudent risks, clearly educate children is one, but we don't have to meet in person, yes, the interaction's better, but we don't have to. You know, should we minimize our inter, should we minimize our, our interaction?
You know, the, I guess the way I feel about it is we are taking one step by mandating masks again, um, and that I am comfortable seeing where we are by early October, and if we need to take the further step, then to go to Zoom meetings only, then that's sort of another level of, um, precaution we would take, that'd be my thought.
And we are saying, if an individual feels uncomfortable, a board member, I'm not just a select board, but any board.
Yeah.
They can, it's hybrid, right?
Yeah.
So we're not, we're not mandating what other boards do, they can do what they want, right?
Yes, because some boards are continuing to meet virtually.
Certainly, the Board of Health is always.
Yes, I was referring specifically to the Board of, the Select Board, not.
Yeah, everybody comfortable with that?
Sure.
And we'll be wearing our masks.
Yeah, and I apologize for not having mine tonight, um, but it doesn't start till tomorrow.
Exactly, I have mine, I'm just about wearing it.
Okay, um, good, um, anything else, Tim, other than the next agenda?
Do we have to vote this thing we just signed, or, or signing up?
No, voting is, we just voted by signing it, right?
We should probably vote it.
The document we just signed?
Okay, I move we, uh, sign the letter, too.
We approve the letter we signed.
No, this is something else, it's already written back to Tim.
Oh, okay.
To the D, Department of, uh, somebody, whoever.
That we accept the intermunicipal agreement for public health excellence for shared services grant presented tonight.
Sorry.
Grant, you were doing the DPU.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I was thinking.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I just had it in front of me.
So we good there, Tim, to move on to the next agenda?
Yeah, I think we're gonna meet tomorrow afternoon, uh, to discuss the.
Yeah, so there's something.
So if you look at this, um, upcoming September fourth meeting, this is the one that's gonna be with the FinCom.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, we have, we're, we're also gonna, we moved the, um, the request for additional hours for the Assistant Treasurer Collector, so that will be on this September fourteenth agenda, and, um.
Excuse me, what are ATC hours under the joint meeting with FinCom?
The Assistant Town Collector.
Oh, sorry, now I get it, okay.
Yes, it was just in a.
All right.
Abbreviation.
All right, and could then.
GWTP, Kate.
OMG, um, and could we add review of our financial goals, um, to that?
Yes.
As well, I can read, please.
Yes, yeah, good idea.
And that should probably be given to them.
Yeah, and then, now, we still, uh, we have, uh, and then, we, uh, Tim is gonna be ready to walk through his goals with us, and we'll, um, we'll get those ahead of time, right, Tim?
Yes, yeah.
Which is great, uh, so we, um, so wait, we, we've got seven oh five for the joint meeting, and then seven oh five.
Well, we'll figure out the time.
I guess you and I can do the times, yeah, we'll do the times tomorrow.
Everything is seven oh five, I'm.
A few more items.
Seven oh five is bye-bye, right?
Yeah, finalizing the goal-setting process, um.
So, what, what do we need to do?
Well, maybe just take another look at what we've got and sign off on it, I guess, right?
Yeah, maybe, yeah, maybe we don't need that.
I, I'm wondering if.
Yeah, do we need more, do we need more discussion about it?
No, we need to vote on it. Do we even need to vote it, I mean, we just.
We probably should.
So why don't we do this, why don't you circulate a final copy, who, who was the scribe, you or Nathan?
I just took notes, it's, it's Mark's thing, Mark will, Mark will send it to him.
Mark, right.
Mark will send the final, we can vote on it.
Yeah, and then, that'll be short, yeah.
Finalization.
Fine, let's keep it short.
Um, appointment, so, we have to, so the ARPA Committee, um, Tim, have we gotten any, um, interest?
We do have, uh, one individual has, uh, applied for it, and not the individual I think we're all thinking of.
Well, what's today, Tuesday, so maybe we should ask the mosquito to run something again.
Yeah, one more, yeah, exactly.
I can do that, I can do that, uh, in the morning, okay.
We're, yeah, the Public Safety Building Committee, we gotta get moving on that.
Yeah, so.
Do we have any more movement on that?
I, I have a couple of people, but I have yet to get them to actually send me their.
Letter of interest?
Their, their, I, I will follow up with them, see?
Yeah, because I think we could go ahead with the two that we already know, you know, had volunteered early on, and then if you have two more, that's, can we go ahead with four people?
I, I think so. We wanna do that.
You think we need more?
We'll do one more press, we'll see, we can shake the tree and get them in. Okay.
Shall I include that in the, in the letter?
Yeah.
To the mosquito, in both, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, all right, then we'll have the Town Administrator's Report, and then the usual stuff.
One item that's not on here is that we're gonna have a hearing on the Community Needs Assessment for the Cable Rental Process. So that report has been issued by a consultant, and that'll be the subject of the public hearing.
Which we will.
In preparation for the negotiations to start with Comcast at the end of the month.
So that's not on here, if that's, we have to add.
That will be part of the Select Board meeting?
Yes.
The public hearing, okay, all right.
I've got the.
So, really, all we're doing is accepting the report, and, uh, on the public hearing, right, or, I mean.
Right, that's correct, and it's, the public has input into items that you should be asking Comcast for in the negotiations, but you might wanna appoint someone to be on the committee to negotiate as well.
Oh, you, you're my guest.
Yep.
Um, anybody else have items that they know now, um, they would like to have on this agenda? And, um, and I guess the question is follow up on this fourth, on the discussion we had earlier, how does that move forward?
The, the one we had in executive?
An executive session.
Yeah, yeah.
That won't be ready, I don't think it won't be ready for the next meeting.
So we just wait and look at that at the end of September?
I guess until we get more information, yeah.
Yeah, but it wouldn't be on the public.
Right.
No, I know, but whether we'd have another executive session, yeah.
We can do that, you can always do that at the end, right, two days prior, four days.
Okay.
Right.
Um, great.
Do we have an agenda item of appointing somebody to Comcast's thing, or can we just appoint me now?
As opposed to putting it in the handling systems?
You guys, can we appoint Nathan right now to be the, our negotiator with the Comcast cable?
Sure.
Sure.
All right, uh, who wants to make a motion?
I move that Nathan.
Be the select.
Be the Select Board Representative to, to whatever.
Comcast cable negotiations.
Comcast cable negotiations.
You okay with this, Tim? Yeah, you're, yeah, no, I think a board member should be part of it, yeah.
All right, all in favor?
Yay.
Aye.
Good, it's, uh, passed enthusiastically.
I went to some of the open, the meeting, the.
All right, so, um, we need to take a quick look at the, are, are there any burning liaison reports that people wanna make?
Yes.
Okay, let's take a look.
My only burning topic was the potential of us using the money for the IT position for.
Oh, okay.
That's a good, that's a good idea.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah, okay, and then let's, uh, take a look, quick look at the minutes, um.
They look late to me.
Oh, I, I have a confession to make, I usually read them very carefully, and I didn't read them at all.
I move that we accept the minutes of July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one, as presented.
I can.